Good morning. Good morning. It is 10:33 on Wednesday, August 13th. I am calling to order a special meeting of the Portland City Council. Rebecca, could you please call the roll?
Koyamalene?
Here.
Mario?
Here.
Novick?
Here.
Clark?
Here.
Green?
Here.
Zimmerman?
Here.
Avalos?
President.
Dunphy?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Ryan?
Here.
Hurdle Guinea?
Here. Thank you.
I'm here too.
Apologies, didn't hear that. Thank you.
Could we please have our attorney go over the rules of order and decorum?
Welcome to the Portland City Council. To testify before council in person or virtually, you must sign up in advance on the council agenda at www-portland.gov/council/agenda. Information on engaging with council can be found on the council clerk's webpage. Individuals may testify for three minutes unless the presiding officer states otherwise. Your microphone will be muted when your time is over. The presiding officer preserves order. Disruptive conduct such as shouting, refusing to conclude your testimony when your time is up, or interrupting other testimony or council deliberations will not be allowed. If you cause a disruption, a warning will be given. Further disruption will result in ejection from the meeting. Anyone who fails to leave once ejected is subject to arrest or trespass. Additionally, council may take a short recess and reconvene virtually. Your testimony should address the matter being considered. When testifying, one, state your name for the record. Your address is not necessary. Two, if you are a lobbyist, identify the organization you represent. Three, virtual testifiers should unmute themselves when the council clerk calls your name. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Colleagues, we have two items on the agenda today, and we are journeying our meeting in about three hours, but then we'll reconvene tomorrow at 2:30 if we have not concluded the business that we have before us. Before we open up those two items, though, for public testimony and discussion, I'd like to just take a moment for something not on the agenda. Do we need to approve today's agenda first?
Yes, item one is agenda approval.
Okay. I apologize, colleagues. Item one is approving the agenda. Actually, before we do that, though, I'll do this before we go to approving the agenda. I just want to take a moment because we had a new staff person start, our council operations manager Dana Richardson, on Monday. And I know some of you have had an opportunity to meet with her one-on-one already. I think for some folks, that's coming later this week still. But I just wanted to give Dana an opportunity to introduce herself in this setting. For folks watching or in the audience today, council operations is the group that does a lot of the support, especially for our committee meetings. And we had an interim manager, one we started, who was here on a limited duration, intentionally came out of retirement to work with us short term. So Dana is our first permanent council operations manager. We are very glad to have her, and I wanted to make sure we had an opportunity. Again, for folks on council who hadn't had an opportunity yet to meet Dana, to get to hear a little bit from you, and also for the public who are watching, to just know who you are, given that you do, and your team does, and you will do so much support for the work that we do, but often behind the scenes. So please, go ahead.
Thank you for this opportunity, Madam President, Madam Vice President, and councilors. As the President mentioned, this is my third day on the job as the council operations manager, and I'm pleased to be here and eager to learn how my team can support this council and its success. As you probably know, I lead a team of 10 folks that are here for policy development and analysis, whether that's in your committees, in your districts. We have capacity in communications and coordination as well. So our brand is really simple. We're here to work for you, each of you as councilors, as the council as a whole. And I'm really privileged to be here today. And I was told you all will go easy on me, at least for now.
Perfect. Thank you so much. And welcome. I think this is the first time that we've gotten the opportunity to have you here. I'm not sure if you were watching the committees earlier this week, but welcome and thank you for being here and being part of the team.
Thank you. Good luck.
Okay, colleagues, the first item on our agenda is agenda approval. There has not been anything taken off the agenda or any requests to reorder the agenda. Do we have unanimous consent for agenda approval? Okay. As we move into our agenda today, we have two items, adopting an ordinance on our council meeting schedule and a resolution establishing a new council committee structure. Both of these items have been discussed by the full council in work sessions, but this is the first opportunity we'll have for public testimony. I'd like to open up, Rebecca, both items together, so that if folks who are signed up to testify are interested in testifying on pieces of both, they can do that just one time and make sure to have a little bit more consistency amongst remarks there. Could you please open items two and three?
Item two, adopt council regular meeting schedule pursuant to code subsection 3.02.010.c. One. Item three, establish new city council committee structure.
Thank you. And colleagues, we don't have our normal introductory overviews on these items because they were heard in work sessions. So if there are not questions before we begin, I'd like to move us straight into public testimony. But if there are any clarifying questions or amendments that haven't been filed that folks would like to share before we do so, now would be the time. Counselor Canal?
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to make sure that potential testifiers were aware. I had prefiled an amendment, and I'll officially move it here. It's filed as Canal I to the Adopt Council Regular Meeting Schedule, and it's a package that is based off of the feedback heard at the work session. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor. And colleagues, if you haven't had a chance to look at that, that has been filed. It's been up for about a week. And I know we had some discussion that was straightforward, and everyone was on the same page, and some where there were some divisions. I think Counselor Canal tried to capture the things where it was mostly straightforward and folks were on the same page.
Correct. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, counselor. Counselor Smith?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President. I did want to add an amendment that would include having Wednesday meetings and on the third Wednesday, having only one night meeting. So would I do that here or would I do that after?
You could absolutely do that now. So that would be a floor amendment, and I'm trying to skim through this to see where that would go. I believe that would be in the first, therefore, A2, where it says on the second and fourth Wednesday of each month at 6:00 PM. And you would amend?
And I would amend that to have all meetings on Wednesdays. On the third Wednesday, we have a night meeting, so that we don't have to have two night meetings.
So this would... I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I was seconding that. Is that a motion?
It's not. I haven't... I did it from the floor.
No, I know, but where were you just, council president? You were saying, you were suggesting it could go somewhere. What were you saying?
On page two of, and I'm sorry, I'm working off of Counselor Canal's proposed amendment right now rather than the original, but on page two of Counselor Canal's proposed amendment, now, therefore, the council directs A, council meetings will occur. I believe Counselor Smith, one, would say on each Wednesday of the month at 9:30 with a recessed meeting, and then two would say on the third Wednesday of each month.
We have two meetings, one in the morning, one at night.
So you're not proposing a 9:30 and a 6:00 PM on that third Wednesday?
Yes, I am.
You are proposing both?
Both.
That every Wednesday, we have a 9:30 and...
Not every Wednesday, but the third Wednesday. Every Wednesday, we have a city council meeting, and then on the third Wednesday, we have a night meeting as well as a day meeting.
So the resolution would read, every Wednesday, a 9:30 meeting, the recessed session at 2:00 PM on Wednesday or 2:00 PM on Thursday, and a 6:00 PM meeting on the third Wednesday of each month?
Correct.
Rebecca, are you capturing that, or do you want somebody to send this to you?
We do need the language sent.
Okay. We'll work on that. So that's been seconded by Counselor Ryan, and I apologize. I don't think I heard a second to Counselor Canal's original amendment that is here. Is there a second for that?
Second.
Thank you, Counselor Green.
I guess I'm trying to understand, are we... Because Counselor Canal's is an amendment, so are we adding another amendment?
Correct.
So are we now in Counselor Smith's amendment?
We are not in debate right now, but folks are putting amendments on the floor so that our testifiers know what the options are that they're responding to.
Got it.
Anything related to... We have not had a consistent practice of having to offer amendments, but it is something that we have sometimes done in order to allow folks to know what is under consideration. I'll note that there are two amendments filed on the council committee structure as well, one by Counselor Dunphy and one by me. We'll talk about those more when we get to that discussion, but for folks who are testifying, I would assume that those are both in play as well. Did you have something to add, Counselor Koyamalene?
Yes, I also will be bringing a floor amendment that I just finished today, and will print out for everyone, around making, as we are looking to have weekly council meetings currently, it takes, can take up to three months for an item to be placed on the full council agenda. And I am looking to make an amendment to change that to 45 days, as we will be meeting twice as frequently.
Okay. Thank you, counselor. And that's a floor amendment, but it looks like you have it on paper. Can you make sure that the clerk's team has it?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Counselor Mario?
Yeah, I just wanted to request that folks email. Can you guys hear me?
Yeah, can you pause for one minute? Was there a second to Counselor Koyamalene's amendment? And if not, you can do that later. Okay, I hear a second. Counselor Mario, go right ahead. I apologize.
No, no worries. Thank you. Sorry, I jumped ahead on that one. I'm just requesting that folks send an email with the updated amendment language so that we can all see it written. I think that's helpful for me. Also, I just wanted to say, if I have to be camera off for a bit, just dealing with some chronic back pain today, and I don't think the public wants to see me laying on the floor, so.
Thank you, counselor, and we absolutely understand.
And I'll send an email your way right now.
Counselor Canal, are you back in the queue?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify, because when I first mentioned it, we hadn't done the second yet. The intent behind that amendment was to be, the amendment I put forward was to be friendly. So I'd ask if my cosponsors to that, to the ordinance, would be willing to accept the Canal I amendment that was emailed out as friendly.
I see nods yes. Okay. Counselor Novick?
Just wanted to note that I'll be proposing an amendment to the committee structure as well, which my staff is going to be emailing to the clerk shortly if they haven't already, and then we'll distribute copies of it.
Can you give a two seconds so that folks testifying know what that is?
It would involve striking the idea of, actually, I don't think that in the, it's formally referred to as a leadership committee, but it replaced the idea of the council president meeting with all of the committee chairs with an idea that committee chairs will meet with their counterparts in committees that have sort of overlapping jurisdictions and only have one committee meet with another at a time, and the council president and vice president could attend those meetings. Because my idea is that the point of committee chairs meeting with each other is to exchange information, and I think that that's important when you've got sort of overlapping jurisdiction. But I don't, I think that it causes public meetings problems and also kind of exclusivity problems if there's a group of six people that meets, and then by definition, they can't tell any of the other six what they met about, because that would violate quorum rules. So I just think that we could achieve the goal of transmitting information without having a leadership committee.
Thank you, counselor. Counselor Dunphy?
Thank you. Very briefly, just colleagues, I sent an, or my team sent an email around about this yesterday, but with regard to the committee structure, you'll note that the resolution as filed is pretty bare bones, and that was an intentional choice. I had, we pulled out any of the sort of contentious pinch points that we had, didn't have unanimity around, for example, vice chair, or chair, vice chair versus co-chair models. And I have subsequently filed amendments so that we can individually have an up and down vote on either of those. The intention is that if the council decides that chair, vice chair is the model to go with, great. If this body decides that co-chairs are the model to go with, great. If we can't come to an agreement, it defaults to a position of maximum flexibility for the presidents. So as we get into this, that is what you will be seeing filed on the items itself. So just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you, counselor. And was there a second to Counselor Novick's proposal?
Second.
Thank you, Vice President. Counselor Canal, are you back in the queue? Or is that an old hand? Okay, that's okay. So for folks watching, I know that was a flurry of information very quickly. I'll try to summarize, and if I've missed something, please, colleagues, jump in. We have an underlying proposal on council meetings, which was debated in a work session, an amendment from Counselor Canal, which has been proposed and seconded, which would capture some of the conversation from that work session, an amendment from Counselor Smith that we are getting written up, which has been seconded, which would change the meeting's schedule to include a weekly morning meeting and once a month evening meetings, and an amendment from Counselor Koyamalene, which has been seconded to decrease the amount of time before the council president must schedule something at a council meeting from 90 days to 45 days. We have an amendment that is under Counselor Dunphy's name, which a few councilor's staff helped to put together, that is a bit of a bare bones capturing of the conversation around committees from our work session. We have a proposal that I have put forward based on some conversations since that was put together with a number of councilors around another way that we could think about committees, and a proposal put forward by Counselor Novick for that second item, the committee item, around how our council's leadership meets with committee chairs. Did I miss anything? Okay. Counselor Canal?
Just clarifying that that amendment was friendly, not seconded, the package on the first one that I put forward.
I think that we need to vote on it and not just accept it in.
Okay.
Just given the extent of it, but I do, I thought I heard a second on...
It was seconded, yes.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. There may be other changes, as we discussed, that folks want to bring forward, but for our community members who are signed up to testify, this at least gives us a starting place for what the breadth of the debate is today. So with that, seeing no one else in the queue, Rebecca, could you please call up our first testifiers?
Our first testifier is Terry Harris, followed by Donna Cohen. And, excuse me, President, do you want to go to six minutes each or three per?
Because we're combining the two, do we have anybody else signed up to testify?
No, these are the only testifiers.
Give a little more time, since we're opening it up on both at the same time. Yes, thank you. Mr. Harris, welcome.
Yeah, you know, my governance committee testimony on Monday went 14 minutes, so cutting it in half is going to be, you know, just great. I appreciate the opportunity, as always. And I've had a lot of time to sort through all of this stuff, and I appreciate putting all the amendments out there. I'm going to testify as generally as to not get into the weeds of all your amendments. In my assessment, the council's problem, and this is important, with committees and with meetings runs deeper than what scheduling, consolidation, or jurisdictional realignments are going to fix. You have some fundamental problems, fundamental questions around the role of committees and council, the procedural structure to implement that role effectively, and providing meaningful, meaningful public involvement within that structure. Unless and until the council commits to an approach to these interconnected problems, the committee system and the council will continue to struggle. The starting point for your committee structure discussions should be a recognition that committees are a solution and not a problem. So I have four pages of written comments in your files. That is not going to fit my six minutes, so I'm going to hit the highlights here, the headlines, if you will, and will be available to answer questions. First of all, an increase in regular meetings is not going to solve your workload problem. The detailed work of committee, detailed work of governance needs to be done in committee in parallel. In addition to establishing the new committees, the council should commit to actually using them, and a committee of the whole will help you do that. I had, you know, 14 minutes on committee of the whole and governance on Monday, and I'll just say that you have some experience with that. Your budget committee operated as a committee of the whole. You took testimony in the budget committee as a committee of the whole. You did your amendments. You did all of your adjustment in the budget committee as a committee of the whole. Then you convened from the budget committee to the regular council to pass a budget bill. So that's the experience. That can help you with broader discussions other than the budget, if you implement it in rules. So that's all I'll say about that. Verbal comments and agency presentations on legislation or legislative items should be generally necessary only once, and it should be directed almost exclusively to committees. If the public is here to give input to the council on a legislative item, they need to know that their input is being heard in the right place, at the right time, by the right people. Doing two hearings is confusing that. And if you want to do things in parallel, you need to have that input in committee where the work is really being done, and that's early on. If you need a full council to hear a hearing, use a committee of the whole and do all the committee work at that level. Don't make people come twice, because they don't know which hearing matters, and that will save you time overall, so that you don't have presentations over and over again. Committees need to be structured to make recommendations to the full council that have consequence. consequence. They should be able to move things to a consent calendar or just kill things outright in Finally, on, to operate effectively, and you're going to have full council meetings weekly and not biweekly, you're going to need more committee hearings. The committee hearings bi-monthly are not going to be enough, so you will have shifted the procedural bottleneck into committee now. I'd suggest that you can have long form and short form committee hearings alternating weeks, so that long form, you can have lots of testimony and discussion on big things, and short form, you can do the quick little code fixes and things that get your eyes on it, but it doesn't take as long. Miscellaneous considerations in these last 55 seconds. Governance and finance probably ought to be its own committee and not be relegated to a committee of the whole or full council thing. There are lots of small, little nitpicky things in government, governance and finance that deserve committee attention, not the attention of all of you every single time. The internal service rates discussion needs not be an entire council conversation, but it does need attention in a committee. The subquorum leadership group is a good idea, but its membership shouldn't drive the number of committees. There is some finesse that can be had to avoid your open meetings problems, and maybe Counselor, or Counselor Novick's amendment might address that. Five standing committees and a committee of the whole is a nicely sized thing, and 10 seconds committee chairs and vice chairs are preferable to committee co-chairs. Only nine seconds.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. We appreciate hearing from you. I know you've spent a lot of time thinking about these topics.
You're good to approach, Donna. Next, we have Donna Cohen.
Welcome. Thank you for being here with us today.
Thank you. I'm gonna take a breath in between the two testimonies if that's okay, so. Morning, Council. My name is Donna Cohen. I'm a resident of District Two. I present workshops on civics to adults. In the How to Engage with Your Elected Officials part of my Citizen Activism 101 workshop, which I presented at Midland and Albina Branch Libraries this summer, I have always been pleased to say how fulfilling it is to speak to one city council, county commission, et cetera. Would you show the picture, please? This is a picture I show of when several of us came to council about a very serious, as in people were dying, traffic safety issue in St. John's. T-shirts, by the way, signified the project we were working on. At the time, I'm actually on the schedule there, but I had spoken before, and a new person wanted to speak from the neighborhood, and we swapped, something which can't be done now. I don't quite understand that. Now I add a picture showing the slow process of the public communication process, unfortunately. Prior to 2025, my experience was that I could request a slot to speak to council and get scheduled within a week to a month. The current wait is over two months, and you're lucky if you can grab a spot at all. And the waitlist option, which may or may not prove useful, is exclusive to those who can get email alerts from their phones and respond within as little as four to five minutes. I kid you not, I have timestamp evidence of waitlist opportunities and when they are fulfilled. And not everyone has the luxury of flexibility for last minute cancellations for a slot either. As outlined on the webpage description for this agenda item, there have been less than half the opportunities for open public comment with the new council meeting structure. Being able to speak to council on matters which council has yet to discuss or even be aware is critical. Council definitely needs to meet more frequently and thus provide more opportunities for the public to speak on any topic. Yes, the proposed ordinance will do just that. As someone who participated in forums during the creation of the plans for the new city government, I was on the speakers bureau for Portland United for Change, I was impressed at how often the issue of communication between the public and the city council is brought up. I commend city council for recognizing the issues addressed by the proposed ordinance. We're still going through growing pains in our new government, with our new government, but you're clearly trying. Thank you for the proposal to increase council meetings and thus public communication with council. Okay, so now, the second ordinance on policy committees. In regard to the policy committees, there is a discussion of whether to reduce the number of committees from the current eight, whether to increase the time allowed for the meetings, and whether to make sure there is someone from every district on all policy committees. I am in support of all these changes. One of my main concerns is that there has not been enough, there's not been time scheduled for open public communication during policy committee meetings. For example, I have some thoughts and some research to share with the housing committee, but have had no opportunity to share them. I wrote to all the committee members, received no response. I wrote again, indicating a second attempt and received response from two council offices, both directing me to the agenda page where there was no option for open public comment. Neither is there an email specifically for the committee. In other words, the public is totally shut out for anything but an agenda item. Another example is the issue of life and death impact to tens of thousands, not only in District Two, but all those who have family members that work at the port facilities and Rivagate industrial area in District Two, namely that the North Peninsula will be completely severed from the rest of Portland after the quake to come, possibly for months. This should have been able to be presented to the transportation and public safety committees. It is a separate issue from the CEI overall. By not being able to do so, we saw the siloing of efforts to solicit monies from the legislature, one effort by the mayor and the city as a whole, and another by the community on the North Peninsula, just D2 counselors and our state legislators. Imagine how that looked to the state transportation committee. Now some of our leaders on the North Peninsula seeking a Zoom meeting with the mayor and some of you counselors to smooth this out for the upcoming special session. We want to be on the same page. We have received an answer, as of yesterday, we had only received an answer from one office, Counselor Mario, and today we heard something from D2. And I dropped off something in the mayor's office and Counselor Clark's office today. Public communication and policy committees will allow input on new ideas to those council members most involved with the topic and overall provide more opportunities for public communication with council, because the proposal to increase such time with the full council only brings us up to the amount that was available under our prior form of government. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for being here, Donna, and for sharing all of those ideas.
Thank you.
That concludes testimony.
Colleagues, I think we've heard a lot of ideas from each other, including some today, and we just heard a number of additional ideas, some of which have been part of our conversation and some of which have not yet, from both Terry and Donna. I would like us to focus first on the first agenda item, the ordinance before us, and open up discussion on, sorry, I'm losing my page here, open up discussion on the ordinance to adopt council regular meeting schedule pursuant to Code subsection 3.02010C1. We have a few amendments open, but I would like to start with the amendment that Counselor Canal has put on the table. He was the first to propose one. It also generally relates to the discussion that we've already had. Counselor Canal, are you in the queue to speak to that amendment?
I can be.
Okay, why don't we start there?
Thank you, Madam President. Colleagues, today we are introducing an ordinance which would return council to scheduled weekly meetings. It's being proposed by Counselor Dunphy, Counselor Avalos, and myself. We talked through the document at a work session last week, and based on those pieces of feedback heard from colleagues, I have proposed an amendment which has been agreed to by both cosponsors as well to reflect your feedback in it. It does not reflect the things that were points of contention as the council president brought up. I think we can debate those subsequent to this amendment, but it does reflect everything that was discussed that was consensus position or near consensus. So I'll just walk through it briefly. The key points here in the council findings, section one, it adjusts for the dates and times that have been updated since this was written in May. It removes references to July, we're past July now. It adds in to the findings the dates that we had scheduled special meetings, and the key points are in the now therefore the council directs, and it removes D, E, and F entirely from it. This is the, removing the no executive sessions may be scheduled on Thursday between 2:00 and 5:00 p.m. unless with the written consent of at least nine counselors. I'm realizing as I read this, and I'll mention now to Rebecca, sorry, section C should also be removed. That's based on feedback there, so we'll send you that updated file. It removes the references to meetings on July 2nd and June 25th, that was part E, and it also removes references to the budget specific work sessions that, and meetings that we'd already scheduled, which was section F. So it narrows the field back down to the creation of a new schedule that has weekly meetings on Wednesday, the soft stop on, at 9:00 on evening meetings, and then there's updates to the impact statement to reflect everything I just said, and you can look down there. Finally, although this was not discussed, I did take the opportunity to clarify one item in the second and third to last lines of the impact statement, which just had the word "folks," and I expanded that out to emphasize who "folks" refers to, which is community counselors and staff. That was not discussed, but I figured it was, it made sense to update through this process as well. So that's what the amendment would do. I'm happy to take any questions on it. Again, this was my interpretation with colleagues based off of the full council feedback in the work session. Thank you, and this was seconded.
And this has been seconded. Thank you, Counselor. Colleagues, is there any discussion to the amendment before us, as described by Counselor Canal?
I guess my question is, are the, is it, sorry, point of order, because it's friendly, is it an amendment that we have to approve or not?
I think that this is extensive enough that we should vote on it, just with all of those removals. I hope it moves quickly, but I think we should vote. Counselor Zimmerman, was your hand up? Go right ahead.
Thanks. Counselor Canal, I appreciate the detail in which you listened at those work sessions, and C, D, E, and F being out is enough for me to support this amendment and make this the new underlying baseline document. I also plan to support, you know, Counselor Smith's, but this is, I think, a better start if that is, if it's going to go forward. So I just want to say thanks for that, and you'll have my support on this amendment to the baseline. And I'm not sure if everybody heard it, but just to clarify, C is not in the underlying file, but C should be removed as well. That's an error on our part when we sent it in, so I'd ask Counselor Green if you're okay with friendly amending this amendment to include the removal of C.
So essentially, the therefor's would be A with the removal of the date and B, and that's really what we're talking about here substantively.
Correct.
Counselor, Counselor Kaya Malane?
That was almost exactly what I was going to say. Thank you.
Counselor Smith?
Thank you, Madam President. I am in favor of weekly council meetings and generally supportive of Counselor Canal's proposed amendment, which appears to meet several of our shared goals. One area of concern that I have is with introducing two evening meetings, considering the increased cost and the toll evening meetings have on our support staff, that that would not be the most optimal way to go about it. In the financial and budgetary impact section of the amendment, it is suggested that the proposed changes would occur parallel to a corresponding reduction in committee meetings in a way that would mitigate, cancel out, or even exceed the budget increase from the additional full council meetings. But since its submission, the current best proposal for a subcommittee structure includes five standing committees down from eight, which would not reduce committee meetings or meeting time enough to be proportional to weekly council meetings as proposed. It seems that the only way to mitigate a substantial increase in costs without rejecting the proposal would be to limit evening meetings to once per month. Individual council offices may be able to hold office hours in the evening on an individual needed basis to increase opportunities to engage with the public, and engagement is important and it's critical, and I've heard a lot about that. So that's where I'm at about the current proposal.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Clark?
Thank you, Counselor President. I agree with Counselor Smith, but I also had a question. So if this passes today, when does it go into effect?
So this is an ordinance that does not currently have an emergency clause. So we are considering amendments today, but unless somebody introduces an emergency clause, this would actually move to the calendar on September 3rd for passage. Non-emergency ordinances go into effect 30 days after passage. I have scheduled out on our calendars, or I have had the clerk hold time on our calendars every Wednesday morning moving forward, and we have been scheduling those as special meetings. So it would be my intent, if it appears that we're moving in the direction of passing this, to begin implementing a schedule as close to this as we can get through special meetings immediately upon passage, but it would not go into effect until 30 days after passage, which would either, or 30 days after passage, which would likely be September 3rd, I believe, is that first Wednesday of the month, unless we were to add an emergency clause today.
Okay, I was thinking October, but maybe I'm, I'm, am I calculating that right? October.
October 3rd would be the effective date, if it was 30 days after passage on September 3rd.
Okay, but you're basically scheduling as though it were the real thing.
We have been scheduling special meetings to allow us to get through our work without running over time for the last few weeks, and I would intend to continue that practice unless I heard from folks on the dais that that was not of interest.
Can you talk a little bit about the budget impact and what that means for the council clerks' office?
Oof, I can do my best, and I also may phone a friend as I start to talk because I would.
Just a, just a point of order, I want to make sure, because I'm a little bit, I want to make sure we're talking about the amendment, because then we have the overarching vote. And I know it was friendly, but that could be confusing, because, and I'm sorry, Counselor, but like, right now, as it reads, with two night meetings, I'll be a no vote on the overarching document. But this amendment, I think, is an improvement to the overarching document, so I plan to vote for the amendment. I just want to clarify that, because it is a strange friendly amendment, but substantive.
Let's do this, Counselor. There is a fair amount of data that we've been sent about costs of previous meetings, and I'm going to see if we can get somebody from our, the operations team here to talk specific numbers on costs when we get back to the underlying ordinance. So let's hold on the answer to that question, but I'll make sure that we have information at least as good as what I can share and hopefully better.
Okay.
Once we're through this amendment.
Let me just say that I don't feel a real sense of urgency right now, before the end of the year, to have these meetings every week. I'm not feeling that kind of sense of urgency, but I am really concerned about the impact on staff, not, and not just the clerk staff, but all the other staff that we have come to this committee as well. Just put, I'll put that out there. I'm very concerned.
Thank you. Counselor Canal?
I just ask for, if you could, Madam President, take Counselor Zimmerman's point, because it was a point of order, that that's, this entire conversation around evening meetings is sort of separate from the amendment we're currently discussing.
Correct.
So I do want to talk about it, I just want to separate the conversation, and I'd just ask for that point of order to be acted upon.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other discussion to the amendment? Okay. Rebecca, could you please call the roll on the amendment from Counselor Canal, which, among other things, removes C, D, and E from the enacted language, and F?
Can I ask a point of order? Okay, we're, we're voting on the overall.
We're voting on Counselor Canal's amendment.
Okay.
Which would remove.
To the original, his original.
C, D, E, and F, among other changes, based on the conversation last week.
Okay, I'm sorry to be dense, but when are we going to vote on Counselor Smith's amendment?
Presumably that will be, I have that written down as the next thing on the list in the order things were proposed previously.
Just wanted some reassurance.
Me too. We will get to have the conversation on night meetings post haste. Rebecca, could you please call the roll?
Just one point of clarification. This is Canal One for Document 2025. This is Canal 1 for document 2025-300.
Yes. Canal 1 plus C, which was a floor amendment to Canal 1. We're removing C as well.
Koyamalane?
Aye.
Mario?
Aye.
Novick?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Zimmerman?
Aye.
Avalos?
Aye.
Dunphy?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Canal?
Aye.
Ryan?
Aye.
Pertilguiny?
Aye.
And the amendment is approved with 12 aye and zero nay votes.
Thank you, Rebecca. Colleagues, we did have two other amendments that were proposed previously to this ordinance. Councillor Smith, do you have the written version of your amendment?
I don't have a, Madam President, I don't have a written proposal other than the fact that what I said earlier, to have all council meetings on Wednesdays starting at 9:30, the third Wednesday of the month, we have two council meetings, one in the morning and one in the evening.
Thank you, councillor. And there was a second to that, I believe. Okay. Colleagues, is there discussion on councillor Smith's amendment? And Rebecca, we are working on getting that in written form for you. Councillor Zimmerman?
So thank you councillor Smith. I plan to support the amendment. I, I think it is the underlying change to the document that couldn't get me to support weekly meetings. As I've said before, the largest city in Oregon should have weekly council meetings. I feel very strongly about that. There's a lot to continue to fix. And I also appreciate the, the consistency that you introduced by not having an either-or on that third Wednesday, but having an increase, and I appreciate that. I share councillor Clark's concerns about the urgency and timing and the impact on staff. I think one of the important things for, for anything, both the public and the staff, is predictability. And this will be predictable, and I think that that's a really good step in the right direction. So if this, I'll vote for the amendment, and I do hope it passes. And I think if it does, that we have a reasonable meeting schedule coming up potentially. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. I want to note two things. There's been a lot of conversation about cost, and I appreciate councillor Clark that you brought that up. I do believe, and I'm waiting to hear back, that having two meetings that day could increase costs because of the length of the day. What I've heard from staff is that if we go from 9:30 in the morning, and we've discussed this when talking about committee schedules, so I hadn't talked to them about it in the council context, but I'm, I'm taking that information from talking about committees to council. If we have a day that goes from 9:30 in the morning until 9:00 at night, that's about a 16-hour day for staff, when you include the prep and wrap-up time. And that creates a fair amount of additional cost for some of the teams that support us. I am very supportive of narrowing down to one evening meeting for a lot of reasons, including the impact on our staff. I had put in our budget and was pleased to see council support two evening meetings in our budgeted for, thinking that one of those would be for committees, but that we would have one evening council meeting. I'm very supportive to moving to, back to one evening council meeting. I do have some concerns about the long day of the, the morning meetings still being scheduled on that day. Councillor Zimmerman, I hear your argument about predictability, but I just want to raise those cost and staffing concerns, so that we're making an informed decision.
Point of order, Madam President. Is there something in the charter that says we have to have one night meeting? Where do we get that from? It's in the charter?
It is not in the charter. I believe that it was added in code around our schedule.
Okay, okay, perfect. But I'm willing, I'm willing to accept a friendly amendment that would put it on another day, so we don't have a 19-hour day. But I just, I just think that whatever day we put it on, it's going to, it's going to still extend that day, even if we change it to Thursday, or Tuesday, or Monday.
If we were to not have the morning meeting that day, so that our support teams could come in later that day, essentially work with their supervisors to flex their time, so we would have, depending on if there were three or four weeks in a month, either, rather, if there are four or five weeks in a month, have either three or four morning meetings, but the day that we had an evening meeting not have a morning meeting? The trade-off is we would lose the consistency that councillor Zimmerman has mentioned. That would address the, the concerns that I've raised.
Yeah, it would be great to hear some more discussion about that and what that would look like.
Councillor Clark?
Well, I would just say it's a long day. If we could start that day at 2:30 or something like that, we've done that in the past, I think, or others. Maybe, should I make a friendly amendment to that? I just, would you accept a friendly amendment to your amendment?
Just to not have a Wednesday morning meeting and just substitute it with a evening meeting?
No, keep, keep the evening meeting, but not start in the morning, we can start in the afternoon.
On the third Wednesday to not have a morning meeting?
Exactly.
I'd, I'd be okay with that if that's what people believe is, is good on the staff.
Councillor Clark, can I recommend that we hear, because there are a number of folks in the queue from others, and have you come back and offer that friendly amendment after we hear a little more discussion? I'm very supportive of it, but-
That's great. Well, that's not why I got myself in the queue, but it was just, it was for the moment. What I really wanted to ask you about, Madam President, is just, you made the comment about evening meetings for committees. I'll be interested in that, that we hold that option open for committee chairs to have evening meetings. And I don't know how that factors into our budget, or how we get permission to do that, but I just want to say that I think we should have that option. Thank you.
I'm happy to discuss my thoughts on that more when we talk about committees, or we can wait, get through, see where we land with committees, and then figure out implementation. Thank you, councillor. Councillor Koyamalane?
I also am interested in what it looks like for one of those two evening council meetings to be subbed out for a slot for possible evening committee meetings. I'm not saying that I'm one way or the other, but I'm interested in what that looks like and the cost difference. From my understanding, it would be a lot less more. I do think, while I am a morning person, we do see higher engagement and attendance in the evening. If it also is to support our committee work, that could also make sense to me.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Novick?
Yeah, I'm, I agree that we shouldn't be having anybody work 16-hour days. I rather like the idea of having, always having Wednesday morning meetings, so I would, might be comfortable with having the night meeting be on a different day, like Thursday evening. That means we have more overall meetings, but it might help us use the night meetings in a more targeted way for topics which we know are going to have lots of public discussion. I think that maybe we could do just fine having the one meeting a month being a night meeting and not having it every, every Wednesday morning. But, so I'm sort of teetering between those two. Do we have three morning meetings and one night meeting on a different night? Or do we have four morning meetings plus a night meeting on a different night? As to the idea of starting the meeting, councillor Clark's idea of starting the meeting at 2:30, I do not like the idea of our meeting from 2:30 to 9:00 at night. I don't think, don't think that we function well when we're meeting seven hours straight.
Okay. Thank you, councillor. Councillor Avalos?
I think that when it comes to evening meetings, for me, it's more about what the goal is. And to me, the goal is increasing the participation of the people in our council. I obviously understand the logistical restraints, the feelings of, I definitely agree that there's no way I could support this amendment that currently, as it states, would be a full day, right, a whole morning and an evening meeting. I think that's more untenable for both staff and for us. But the broader goal of this amendment being reducing our amount of council meetings from two in the evening to one, I do not support. I understand and respect the staff impact, but also, this is a new council, we have new expectations, and I don't think that our desire to increase the people's voice and representation in council should be prohibited by a staffing issue. So I will not be supporting this amendment. I would like to continue to have two evening meetings, or I would like to, I guess, start, since we don't currently have that. I want to increase the amount of opportunities people have to engage with us in off-hours.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor, councillor Zimmerman, have you spoken to this amendment?
Ryan should speak.
Okay. Perfect. Councillor Ryan?
Councillor President, I like the consistency we're offering Portlanders with council meetings on Wednesdays, with one Wednesday being an evening meeting. I think that would simplify this. You like that friendly amendment? Councillor Smith likes that friendly amendment.
Is that the same as the amendment councillor Clark was proposing, or are you proposing something different?
No. No, it's, it's different, so-
Okay. Why don't you lay it out for us?
Consistency is, we have a council meeting every Wednesday. One Wednesday a month, we have council after dark, you know, we have an evening meeting. Sorry, college football's starting soon. Yeah.
So councillor, that would be, instead of a morning meeting that day, we would have the evening meeting that day?
Yes. And then I think that provides, council meetings are, are on Wednesdays, and then once a month, we have an evening one.
Excellent. Okay, are you offering that as a friendly amendment?
I am, especially now.
Okay, and councillor Smith, I believe, has accepted that?
She has.
And who was our second on the, councillor Ryan, you were the second on councillor Smith's original amendment, correct? Perfect.
We're both in.
Okay. So this has been changed, this proposal has been changed by a friendly amendment to be one evening meeting a month, and we would not have the morning meeting that day. And I believe that this has been proposed for the third Wednesday. Is that correct?
Yeah, whatever it was earlier, it was a third, yeah. This offers consistency for Portlanders, offers efficiency for our staff, and also it's cost-sensitive.
Thank you. Councillor Zimmerman?
Thanks. I, I think that's a fine friendly amendment. I think it brings up an important piece here, and this is, this is why I care a lot that we have one night meeting. And it really gets to, we can either talk about supporting the employees who support us, or we can take action to support the employees who support us. And I think that taking action to limit the number of night meetings is one of those actions that reduces strain on a pretty significant apparatus to keep this animal alive. It also really matters, there, I just want to highlight, there are a couple of expectations that I'll have of the presiding officer moving forward. With this many consistent meetings in every Wednesday, we have got to have a clear stop time on more days. We have, we have blown the finish line on more meetings than we've met it, I feel like. And I think that that, that trend has reared its head in this document alone, just by outlining the 9:00 p.m. stop time that was highlighted. There's obviously an appetite for that, which, if, if the presiding officer is able to hold these times and be consistent on that, that's part of why I was okay with both a morning meeting and then a night meeting, because I, I think it would be unhealthy to go from 9:30 until 9:00 at night. But three hours, and then many hours later, starting, six hours later, starting again, that sent, that felt palatable. But I like the change that's been made, but it still has this underlying piece of, I think, reducing chaotic schedules, recognizing that a lot of folks keep us working and keep this dais alive, and that we, in the way we, the way we do or do not find the end of a meeting and think, we have to get through it. Most of the time, there will always be another meeting. There are very few things that can't be tabled until the next meeting if we've blown through it. And I recognize that that will happen, but to some other councillor's points, we're going to have so many more opportunities for this. I think we need to lean into it and do our, our best to apply the principles about the nighttime meeting of finish up the last item, or finish up the item that is open and then call it, and apply that as much as we can stringently. And I, and I'm not in favor of putting it in code, but I think it is a presiding officer's prerogative to help us stick to those timelines. It's about a three-hour, maybe a four-hour at most when we have these daytime morning meetings. So I think that we should take seriously, both in this conversation, as well as when we get into committees, the impacts that we are having on the rest of the support staff to keep this council alive. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Smith, we'll get right back to you, but we've had two people join the queue who haven't spoken yet to the amendment. Okay, councillor Canal?
Thank you, Madam President. I will be voting no on this amendment. I appreciate that it has been improved, I think, by councillor Ryan's friendly amendment to the amendment, but I think the underlying point that councillor Avalos raised is still compelling to me. So I just want to step back for a second. We budgeted in the budget for two evening meetings of some part of the council per month. That's already approved. It has been funded. There were some parameters on that that needed to be created around not having a 6:00 meeting end up going till 11:13, like our first one did, that the point that, the portion of the document, which councillor Zimmerman just mentioned, the soft stop, addresses. The question here is not whether we have two night meetings a month or one, because it's not about, that's not the underlying question. The underlying question is whether that second evening meeting is for the full council or would be reserved for a committee. Either way, it's funded and it is going to be staffed. That's already approved in June. That there would be two meetings of some portion of this council in the evening, whether it's the full council or a committee is yet to be determined. Secondly, the consistency argument, it is equally consistent to say morning, morning, evening, morning, or morning, evening, morning, evening, if it's the same thing every month. Neither is more consistent than the other. So I think as long as the adoption of this ordinance in some form will create that consistency in a way that improves upon the current practice, which I appreciate from the council president, of augmenting our additional schedule with special meetings. So given all of that, the real question here is fundamentally, do we want a second meeting in the evening to be for a committee, which would be inconsistent which committee it would be, right? That would change over time, which would be not necessarily, we have no understanding what the process for determining that would be, because we haven't built one yet. Or do we want it to be for where the people come, which is the council, which is the full council, as it has been for decades and it should remain? And I have seen the patterns of who comes and how many people come in the evening for the full council versus the daytime meetings, and it is very, very clear that there is more appetite for the evening meetings on the whole. And I, in particular, after, as the council president has noted, her choice to schedule, I think in a really good way, those items that are of, of public concern primarily in the evenings. So with that said, I'll be voting no on it. I think we need to retain the idea that this entire purpose of this enterprise is to feed, is to, is to serve the people. And we've already addressed much of the staff concerns, but fundamentally, we've lost the fact that, that having people be able to come and testify here before their elected representatives, all 12 of us, is the underlying purpose of, of this entire enterprise. Thanks.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Mario?
Councillor Canal actually answered most of my questions. I was going to ask logistically what it's going to take to adjust the budget if we were to have two evening council meetings, so hearing that we have already budgeted for that makes me feel better about this. I completely agree that we do need to have more evening meetings, because there are very different types of people that are able to attend in the middle of the day versus people who are, who I've seen come at council, at evening meetings. I am also perfectly fine with councillor Ryan's friendly amendment to, to this. I think it was common sense. And I agree with councillor Zimmerman as well, that there, we do need to have some limits, so that people are at their best when we're on the dais, and that our staff can also, you know, have lives that they are organizing around work, and they know exactly when things are going to end. But overall, we do want evening engagement for council meetings, and ideally, one day for committee meetings as well, so I'll be supportive of this. Thanks.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Novick?
Yeah, I just, I think that the number of items where it's, the people who want to come in the evening, you talk about them as limited. So I just intuitively think that having one night a month is going to be enough to satisfy that desire. And I'm curious if councillor Avalos or councillor Canal can come up with examples of, in the past six months, of an item which should have been heard at an evening meeting, but was heard at a day, a day meeting, and therefore you think that that limited what would have- been robust public input.
Counselor, would you like to respond?
I don't want to use my second attempt, but...
Okay. Counselor Avalos, would you like to respond briefly?
I don't have a specific example. I don't think I need one. I don't think we've even gotten, we've even scratched the surface of the types of topics that are going to be coming to the council that will require more public engagement. So I'm looking to the future of how we're setting up a system for people to engage with us. So I don't think that an example is necessarily relevant. I don't have a specific one, other than, I guess, the second, Counselor Knoll, to say this one is probably the best example I come up with on the spot.
Counselor Novick, anything further? Counselor Kuyama Lane?
I'd like to start with saying I do appreciate, Council President, how you've been intentional about putting items that seem to have a lot of public interest for evening meetings, scheduling them then. I like the idea of having the option to be able to, for the public to meet us, come before us two times a month in the evening. We don't necessarily have to use both of those, especially as you're very intentional about scheduling. They could always be taken off the schedule. It's always easier to take something off the schedule, cancel it, than to try to fit it in. As this is now, I do not plan to support it without seeing that it's in writing, and it's clear that the public could meet us in the evening two times a month.
Counselor, are you referring to having a committee slot in writing somewhere? Or are you referring to council meetings when you say having something in writing?
Having a committee slot and having a real, clear outline of what that would look like and how committees would sign up for that. I know that part of the next item, we'll be touching on that, we'll be touching on committee structure, so that I understand that that is also part of the equation.
Thank you. Counselor Smith?
Thank you, Madam President. I think it goes back to what Counselor Zimmerman said. If we start taking things off the agenda, then people don't have a sense that this is a regular occurrence. So putting things on and off as we feel, that's not a, that's not a good option. We need to be able to give the public three days, three days a month when we're going to meet, and then that one day for the evening. Now, there are going to be some extraordinarily special meetings that may not be a committee meeting, or may not be a council meeting that is of public interest, that we might need to have a evening meeting that all of us are here for. So it may be a work session that people are highly interested in, that we have at night. So I think we need to have the flexibility to do that, but I think, as Counselor Ryan said, his friendly amendment is probably our best bet to keeping things very simple and having a routine, so that people can get used to a routine of when we're actually meeting. Because right now, we don't have that. It's, it's all over the place.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Dunphy, I don't believe you've spoken to this amendment yet.
I have not. Thank you. You know, colleagues, I am going to be supportive of the Smith amendment as changed. I am not, right now, inclined to have two evening meetings a month. I don't think that we have yet demonstrated as a body that that is necessary. We have the budget in order to have two evening events happen, meeting of council meeting and a, potentially a committee meeting, potentially a special hearing. We can always change our rules. We will inevitably change our rules in the next six months when we decide that what we're agreeing on today isn't working for us. I don't feel like we have yet reached a point in our flow where that is quite necessary. So I will be supportive of having one evening meeting. I also am very supportive of the idea of intentionally building in space for committee meetings in the evenings, especially because I think, as we progress this conversation further, we will see the definitions of why we have committees being a little bit more clear. And so I will be supportive of this amendment.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Clark?
I'm sorry, did you call me? Okay. Good. I just want to remind people that it's not just the Council Clerk's office, it's not just BTS, and it's not just security that is supporting us, it's all the people in the bureaus. And we have seen them here. We don't always see them here, because they're over in the Portland Building, listening to us and being on call in case we have a question. And we forget that those are costs too, that all those, I'm afraid we're going to burn those people out. And that's an ongoing concern I have, if we haven't already burnt them out by our endless debating about things. But I'm pro the one meeting, just be clear. Just want to remind people.
Thank you, Counselor, for bringing that up. I do think that that's one of the places where there, the impact difference between committees and council is clear. Counselor Murillo?
I just wanted to push back on the idea, or maybe answer Counselor Novick's question regarding matters of public interest, because I think that there have been quite a lot, but we haven't always had an opportunity to do an evening meeting. The top three that came to mind for me were the Zenith Resolution, the algorithmic price fixing ban, which I will be bringing back, anything regarding ICE right now is going to be a huge matter of public interest, the Portland Street Response Resolution, the Albina Settlement, any of the police settlements, I'm sure we will have a lot of people coming in if we have it more publicly available. So I think that there are a lot of matters of public interest, and what I have seen in my committee meetings, even with people who I agree with and like, is that the people who can come and testify generally are either wealthy, retired, or they tend to be lobbyists for organizations, and they're paid. And again, those could be people I agree with and like. But you get a different type of person that comes in, in the evening meetings, and I think that that's really important and valuable for us as a council to hear, because during our committee meetings too, it's different when the full body of council is hearing the testimony than it is when someone is reading off to you, hey, the staff summary says that 12 people testified, and they were all strongly in favor of this because of XYZ. That doesn't have the same emotional impact for us as legislators and leaders as it does when you are face-to-face with your community, and you have to answer them, and you have to look them in the eyes and say yes or no on something. So I think that, overall, having two evening meetings that we have already budgeted for is reasonable. I think there will be lots of matters of public interest, as long as we choose to be exciting with our work.
Thank you, Counselor. I hesitated to get in the queue, but I do think that it's important to note that as we talk about accessibility of meetings, evening meetings are really important. There are people who can come, who can't come during the day. But we shouldn't assume that people who work are better off coming to an evening meeting than during the day. We have members of our community who work shift work, we have members of our community who work in hospitality and entertainment industries, for whom a daytime meeting actually can be better. And I just want to make sure that we are not making assumptions about who has access to what types, times of day, thinking only about people who work nine to five.
Well, yes, I think I was talking...
Counselor, it was a broader comment. Counselor Smith?
Yes, I do have a written-up amendment. And I'd like to move to amend this ordinance by replacing A1 and A2 with the following. Number one, on the first, second, on the first, second, fourth, and any fifth Wednesday of each month, beginning at 9:30 AM. Two, on the third Wednesday of each month, beginning at 6:00 PM. And amend the ordinance by inserting a new section, A.3, and renumbering the current A.3 to A.4. Any regular meeting that is recessed with unheard agenda items will continue at 2:00 the following Thursday. That is just the housekeeping rule that I didn't have in before.
Thank you, Counselor. And if your team can share that with everybody and get it to the clerk, that would be helpful.
Thank you.
Counselor Knoll?
Two things. Thank you, Madam President. First, I appreciate the point you made, Madam President, and it gave me an opportunity to mention why, because I was asked earlier, why is it alternating first and third, second and fourth, as opposed to some other form of configuration there? And it relates to your point about shift work, and I remember, I've worked retail, I've worked hospitality, I've had different schedules. Ordinances are generally heard in two successive meetings. So having the opportunity for one of those two meetings to be in the evening allows for at least those, regardless of schedule, to take part in some way in part of that conversation. And so I do think that that variety, as Counselor Murillo brought up, is vital to ensuring that everyone can participate. The other thing I'll note, and I was not aware of this until Counselor Smith just read the new text, is that we would be eliminating the Wednesday afternoon recessed meetings in the text that was just read. And so, yes, because the third part, the new A3, says that any meeting that was recessed with unfinished items would be resumed at 2:00 on Thursday.
Right.
Which means that the 2:00 that you can see currently in A1, as currently read, recessed session of a Wednesday morning meeting will be held at 2:00 PM on that Wednesday. So that Wednesday meeting for the three or four, however many Wednesdays a month in which there is a morning meeting, would go away with this amendment, which is another reason I think that it should be voted no on. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Smith, are you raising your hand with a correction on your amendment?
Right. We would still, even on the morning meetings, if we need to, if we need to recess, we still have the ability to do that on Thursday at 2:00.
Right now, and on the proposed calendar ideas that have been sent out, Counselor Smith, we have the option of a Wednesday afternoon recess or a Thursday afternoon recess. That's in code currently. We haven't generally used the Wednesday afternoon recess, but I could foresee us using the Wednesday afternoon recess after a morning meeting. We would not use that Wednesday afternoon time after, on weeks when we had an evening meeting. On those weeks, we would obviously just use that Thursday afternoon time. So I think the question is whether you are intending to limit those options, or whether you're intending to maintain the status quo option of a Wednesday or Thursday afternoon recess, except on weeks when we have an evening meeting.
Yes. That sounds good. Counselor Zimmerman, can you enter this conversation? Because I think that that, is he for a point of order?
Yeah. So I think that your amendment with the Thursday option is the important part here. I mean, I think that this, what we're getting at here is the Wednesday option, basically two hours after, maybe we took a break on a current Wednesday, is not a great practice, right? It turns into an all-day meeting, and I think that's part of what we're solving here. It allows the presiding officer to say, come back on the Thursday. And I think that's a healthier rhythm, instead of, take your half hour, because we never seem to end when we should, and then come back 30 minutes later. That is where we're in these all-day meetings, when they should have just been a morning meeting. And so I think Counselor Smith's option of Thursday is the important piece here, as the rollover, and not this doubling up on Wednesday piece.
Right. Because it says, any regular meeting that is recessed with unheard agenda items will continue at 2:00 PM the following Thursday, whether it be a night or a morning meeting.
I think that's a healthier rhythm for everybody involved.
Counselor?
I also would like to, the reason I really had my hand in there was, I don't even know what to call it anymore, but limit debate to anybody in the queue, and let's move on to a vote.
Thank you, Counselor. I think that it is important for folks to see this in writing, because it's making more changes, Counselor, than you had originally...
If my staff is listening, please send that to the clerk.
Okay. Do we have that in email?
Send it to the, send it to the entire council.
It sounds like we may have just gotten it as we were talking.
It seems like Elijah sent that out. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you to Elijah, Counselor.
Okay, this is, no, this is the same thing.
Okay. So let's give everybody a minute to look at what is in writing here. I believe that everybody has had at least two opportunities to speak to this.
Can I?
Counselor Knoll, do you have...
I hadn't finished, but this, I got interrupted at the end there with the information. So can I finish the thought?
Please.
In 2024, this council met 36 or 45 hours a month. This is assuming the normal cadence of three-hour meetings with the recesses built in. And that was the maximum. Sometimes I didn't take the recess meeting. In 2025, we met 15 hours a month. This proposal, the underlying ordinance, would go back to 30 or 39 hours a month. It's still fewer than in preceding years, and that's because there's no opportunity for two recessed meetings on an evening meeting. And the amendment that's being proposed right now, given that reduction of the Wednesday recess time, would reduce it to 24 or 30 hours a month, which is a significant change from all of the underlying numbers we just discussed. It reduces, we'd be adding only nine hours of full council a month, which I think, given that we have increased the number of filers from six to 14, people who can initiate a document here, and we've increased the number of people who debate and discuss those proposals from five counselors, including the mayor, to now 12. There is a need to ensure that we're not going so far lower than what we've had in the past, not to mention the underlying needs that was brought up in the testimony around public testimony. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Colleagues, are there any other comments? Counselor Smith?
I would like to correct the math on that. Because if you add the Thursday meetings, that's another three hours. And three times four is 12. With the other four meetings, that's 24. And, but we do have the ability, if we need to, to go over on the Wednesday morning meetings. So...
Thank you, Counselor. Seeing no one else in the queue, and I think we have all well more than exhausted our two speaking points each. Rebecca, could you please call the role on Counselor Smith's amendment, which I believe we now all have in writing? Sorry, I'm pulling it up. Kuyama Lane?
No.
Murillo?
No.
Novick?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
Green?
No.
Zimmerman?
Aye.
Avalos?
No.
Dunphy?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Knoll?
No.
Ryan?
Aye.
Hurdle Guinea?
Aye.
And the amendment is approved with seven aye and five nay votes. Thank you, Counselors. Colleagues, I believe Counselor Kuyama Lane had proposed an amendment which has been seconded to the underlying ordinance. Counselor Kuyama Lane, would you like to speak to that amendment?
Sure. Thank you, Madam President. So as part of the discussions that we're having around streamlining committees, possibly adding council meetings, I'm proposing an amendment to Section 3.02.020, titled "Council Agenda," to change the deadline for items being heard to be moved from three months to 45 days. There have been concerns raised about the length of time council items take to come before council, once out of committee. I hear some of these concerns. For example, as the timeline plays out, attachments may become irrelevant, as well as losing urgency, and momentum can be lost on the issue itself. With this proposed council regular meeting schedule that we're suggesting today, we may no longer need the full 90 days. So goals for reducing that timeline include increased transparency and efficiency, and limiting the amount of time needed for staff to track the status of any individual item, and be ready without notice to present. So I look forward to this discussion around what you all think around this.
Thank you, Counselor. And we do have a second on that already. Colleagues, is there any debate on this motion? Counselor Green?
Thank you, Madam President. To me, this seems pretty straightforward and sensible. We've doubled the amount of, we will double the amount of council meetings. We should be able to schedule those within 45 days. So I will plan to support these. Thank you.
Counselor Clark?
I'm not so certain, I guess, that we need to do that, that maybe we need to implement the additional council meetings first, and then come back and reevaluate this. the additional council meetings first, and then come back and reevaluate this. So I'm torn. I think I'll probably vote against it and hope that we have time to really see if our new council cycle works to facilitate rapid movement. I don't know that we need to zero in on 45 days.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Ryan?
Thank you, Madam President. My concern here is that, have you had a conversation with Michael Jordan or the DCA's about your amendment?
I have not.
That's, thank you. And the reason I would want to talk to them about that, because what I keep hearing is the workload challenge. I also know Council President has reason to weigh in on why, as Council President, she's made some of those decisions. But I really think what I'm experiencing is sometimes we're not connecting with the staff who fundamentally have to implement what we're passing, and if we don't have time to socialize it and then work with them, it sometimes takes more than 45 days. Yeah. So right now, that's why I hesitate to why I'd vote.
I hear that. And I know that as governance leaders, we've talked about this idea, and that was something that you brought forward, which is something that makes a lot of sense. So I know my team has reached out and started to ask about those conversations. I haven't gotten to have them yet, and what you're saying is very valid. Thank you.
I so appreciate your candor. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. And I'll note that City Administrator Jordan is out this week, but acting in his stead is, I believe we have Sarah this week acting in his stead. I apologize, I was thinking through the schedule, because there's a few different people. I'm seeing if she's available to weigh in on that, Counselor. Counselor Smith?
Thank you, Madam President. And I would say ditto, ditto, ditto to Counselor Clark, because we don't know the flow, and then we have to add this extra layer of if we're changing the committee system. So it's going to be harder to get out of committee, we're going to be in committees longer, so that's going to be a strain. So I would suggest us getting into the flow of what we're going to be doing in terms of our infrastructure, so we know if 45 days is the actual timeline, and we may need to expand it to 120 days. I don't know, but we need to figure out how to manage all these new changes, and look to see if our levers that we're trying to put in place, if it's going to be appropriate. So I agree with Counselor Clark. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Green?
Yeah, I just wanted to note that most of what we'll be doing when we do policy development is pre-referral to the full council. And so when we engage at the bureaus, it is important to engage with them early as we develop our policies, and then that gets referred to our committee, and then we pass it out of committee. And so I don't think we're short cutting the engagement with staff by moving the referral from committee to full council to 45 days. And I think it gives us an opportunity to clear some bottlenecks that we have in the city right now. As, you know, many of my colleagues have said, we want to be the city of yes. And it's hard to imagine being the city of yes if we have a really long lead time in passing policy. And so that's why I support the 45 days.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Knoll?
Thank you, Madam President. I'm confused by the conversation around whether or not we would need to ask someone if they want something they filed to be on the agenda faster. I am confused, because once something has been filed, the filer, whether it's a part of the administration, or it's a city counselor, obviously wants it to be discussed. And so having this backstop of it can't be longer than however many days it is, is a protection for that individual and for the content to ensure that it happens. But I think what we're hearing here is really the tools of status quo bias, because the tools of status quo bias are using process to impede progress. Did you run this by someone that's not material to the conversation? Is one of those things. And I'm just baffled by the idea that if the administration or a counselor is putting it forward, they wouldn't want it to be on the agenda faster. So that's not about the number of days specifically, but it is about the conversation. I'm just very, very confused by that. And it's applicability here. As it relates to Counselor Kuyama Lane's amendment, I appreciate this conversation, because we are talking about this in the context of how many hours of council we have. We can't act at the pace that the people want us to act right now. And that's not primarily because of this. It may relate to the number of days. I think it does to some degree, as we saw with Counselor Dunphy's proposal on changing the noise code, and that was the only reason that that ended up getting on the special meeting agenda that week. But primarily, it's because we move slower than the mayor, and we are unable to be as responsive to the needs of the people as we'd like to be. Part of that's by design. The mayor is designed to act faster, but part of it is because of the underlying needs for this entire ordinance. And I think because the day count relates to that, this is relevant to that conversation. I'm not 100% certain where I'm at on it. I'm likely to vote yes at this moment, but I do think it's worth saying, we should be looking at a council agenda that reflects the needs of the people as council sees it. And I feel like we've had a lot of time go towards the mayor's proposals and the administration's proposals, which are important, and have had the other part of our government, meaning counselors, have to wait to have whenever the gaps, whatever the scraps are left at the table on the agenda from the mayor's side. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Zimmerman?
That was quicker than I expected. I guess I have said multiple times when we've written code, when we've written council rules, that I'm not a big fan of putting a lot of specifics in what a presiding officer or what a chair or vice chair does, because I value the decision-making of that person, and it's part of how I judge them in their role. And so, and I know there's differences of opinions about how much authority or what the role of council president is that exists on this dais, but I am counting on the presiding officer of this council to have an idea for the breadth and extent of all things coming to this council, and making the best decision for what comes next. And so by adding this 45, so to be clear, I was against in December and January, I was against the 90 days, and that was a compromise. And now this 45 days is just that much more of how much I would be against it, because 45 days in our work, given the nature of everything that comes, I think eliminates my ability to say the presiding officer has decision-making abilities on this, and it means any person could do the role, because you just say, oh, we're coming up on 45 days, this thing has to go forward. So I think there are times when a perfectly well-meaning piece of legislation is going to bump up against that 45 days, but given what we're in the midst of, it may be a bad time for council to take it up. And I use this topic specifically that we're on today. If this had hit its 45-day mark on May 23rd, I think it would have been chaos for us in the midst of a much bigger mission, which was passing a budget. And so I think 90 days gives a great deal of flexibility, and still gives us as counselors a serious backstop that is not too far in one direction. And so I want to just caution everybody in that I think the presiding officer has a role, and that role is a little bit of a bigger picture, an awareness of a bigger picture than maybe we all do from our foxhole. And so for that reason, I think 45 days is well-meaning, but actually in implementation could cause us pretty significant problems down the line. So I hope that we don't support this amendment, and I hope that we lean on the presiding officer to give us a reason, or to help us politic something if we need it to come more quickly, instead of continually using the rules. Because I think we are inherently in politics, and we are in the business of convincing other humans to get a thing we care about passed, or at least heard, and
You want to listen to me about that?
We will only use the rules if we're not good at the politics. And so I just offer that up.
Thank you, Counselor. Colleagues, we have DCA Morrissey stepping in, who's our acting city administrator this week, and DCA Morrissey, you have DCA Olivera in the room as well. If you want to phone a friend, the question for you both that was posed by Counselor Ryan, what we're discussing right now is whether the current requirement that a presiding officer schedules something at council that has come out of committee, which is a 90-day requirement, something has to be scheduled at council within 90 days, should be shortened to 45 days, and whether, I'm paraphrasing Counselor Ryan, so if I paraphrase incorrectly, please step in, whether something that is coming from a counselor, so not something that the administration has brought forward, but something coming from a counselor, coming out of committee, and then being heard and presumably passed out of council within 45 days, is a requirement that would work for the administrative side, or whether there are times where you all would want us to take more time in order for you to have more time to prep for that presumably being passed and coming to you for implementation?
Thanks, Counselor.
Was that an appropriate summary?
Yeah.
Okay.
So for the record, it's on.
I don't believe it's on. Is it green now?
It's on now. So for the record, DCA Sarah Morrissey, her pronouns, my response would be that it depends on the context, and it is highly dependent on how the staff have been engaged, if the council office needs to develop policy, if it is impacting budgetary element that needs analysis. It's just highly contextual, dependent on the volume of work and complexity that the item has. So whether it's, I'd say, right, if a council member is bringing forward a resolution, I feel like that would be fine in the 45 days or less. I think if it's an ordinance, any type of land use, any type of major budgetary impact, that would take a more coordinated, significant time. And so I think it just depends on the scale of the impact of whatever council is working on. And then also, I would say, how much have the teams on the administrative side been involved, whether it's providing analysis or developing code? Again, just depends on what the ordinance would be.
Counselor Smith?
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Assistant DCA Sarah. I was just getting ready to say that we have two things at our disposal as a commission, and the reason why we would need to talk to the administration and the mayor's office is to ask them whether this is a resolution, an ordinance, if they could get things out quicker. Because what I find is the issue is that there are all these emergency ordinances that we should have had earlier, and if we had that time earlier, that 90 days would have been really nice to have. Secondly, we always have at our disposal the 9/12s. If there's an emergency, if there's something that needs to go on the big council, then we have that ability to put those items forward. And I think we should use that lever sparingly, but we do have it at our disposal that would help with this 45-day thing that folks may think that we need right now in code. I just don't think that we need it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Colleagues, I want to speak to this just from the experiences that I've had as the presiding officer over the last seven months, when we have had some things that have come right up to the deadline. The reason that we have had that has been the combination of less frequent meetings, and for the most part, the budget period. When things were coming right up to the deadline was during and immediately after our budget process. And my intent is never to drag things out to the very end unnecessarily. I am looking forward to, if the underlying passes in some form, having the flexibility of more regular meetings, so that we can be more thoughtful as a body about what is at a night meeting versus a day meeting, what is paired together and not paired together. We had an unfortunate pairing of agenda items recently that I would have liked to avoid, but because of deadlines, wasn't able to. And my hope is that things don't come up against the deadline. I worry that if we shorten that deadline, which I understand having that backstop in case you have a presiding officer holding something, I worry that by shortening the deadline too much, we end up, when we're in the middle of the budget process, or if we have a really meaty item that takes up time in a number of council meetings to get through the full debate, that we could end up in a situation again where our presiding officer in the future has to arbitrarily move things around in a way that isn't what the body was hoping for because of the deadline. So I just want to share that perspective. I think I and future presiding officers can work with whatever this body wants to choose, but not having that flexibility while a backstop that I think provides folks a guarantee that presiding officers won't play games with their measures, does limit our ability to be thoughtful about how we bring things forward. Counselor Clark?
Thank you, Madam President. And thank you, DCA Morrissey, for the clarity. I'm quite concerned about the impact that we have on the staff and all the different bureaus, particularly the ones I work with, because we do so much work. And thank you, Council President, for reminding us about the kind of backlog we had during the budget process. I think it's a good reminder. And there's nothing that says that we can't bring things forward more quickly now, especially that we're going to have more meetings. And I guess I'm lucky that you waited a little while to call on me, because I was feeling a little heated about some of the comments that were made regarding how the people want us to act and the needs of the people. I think the people want us to provide some leadership on economic revitalization in this city, that they're waiting for us to deal with those larger issues, and affordability, and homelessness, and those kinds of things. I think we're way behind in offering leadership on economic revitalization. I just want to put that there, that I think that's what the people are waiting for us to do. But that's just a side comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Kuyama Lane?
I really appreciate this great conversation. I think a lot of really good questions and concerns, comments have come up. Just want to remind everyone that currently, it can take three months for something to come to committee, and then another three months for it to come to full council. So that is six months. I think we need to ask if that feels right. I've seen some of those concerns pop up with different items from many of us up here, wanting our agenda to come to full council. And I saw that, I saw conversations around SIP, where folks are really wanting that to get on the full council, around the noise code, around a few other things. I really found my colleague, Counselor Zimmerman's, point interesting around the timing piece, especially with budget. That does make sense to me, that we do want to be able to maintain flexibility. And I have seen some ways that Council President already has been able to be flexible, and frankly, reasonable, if you have a conversation with her about an item that is in the queue, being able to talk about that. And also, when it's getting close to the 90 days, there are some workarounds. I've seen items that are close to the 90 days, and we can put it on the agenda and take it off, or we have a conversation if the members who are introducing it are open for that coming later. I hope, and I invite everyone to really zoom out and think about this as politically neutral as possible, and think about how long do you think it makes sense for legislation that you might want to bring to come, to make it through? I also am reviewing code and seeing that, I mean, when something is coming to the full council, it has already passed out of committee. So there's been debate, it's passed, it's met the administrative requirements in coordination with the auditor. And so for me, part of this really is math. If we are going to be meeting twice as frequently, there should be an expectation that Portlanders expect that we are getting through business faster, which is something I'm hearing from staff also, that we need to be getting through stuff faster.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Novick, I don't believe you've spoken yet to this issue. Actually, I'm pausing. I'm sorry, I don't believe Counselor Dunphy has either. Counselor Dunphy, go right ahead.
Thank you, yeah. I-
I am going to be supportive of this amendment. You know, Council President, I think you have done as great of a job with the situation as we could. I think that you're exactly right, that meeting frequency and the budget has screwed everything up. I am also the author of two ordinances that this body has passed that both approached the 90-day mark, and we had very limited tools to be able to adjust with that. I'm also noting that the written testimony, though it is anonymous, one-third of the testimony in the, on this item is specifically that this council has not acted with the urgency that the moment calls upon. So, anything that I think we can do to increase the turnover time for these things is going to be leading towards the values that we are going to. I firmly believe that this council president and future ones, well, I don't know about future ones. I know this council president is working with the best intentions towards getting things scheduled and that we are doubling the number of council meetings. So, I think building in some additional urgency in our time is reasonable. So, I will be supportive of this amendment.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Nowick, had you wanted an opportunity?
I just wanted to see the actual text of the amendment in context again. And I think Counselor Koyama-Lane said she'd send it to me.
Yes, send it to him, teams.
I don't see it.
Thank you. I'll let you two figure that out. Counselor Avalos.
I agree with the framing that Counselor Dunphy just shared. I think that if we're making all of these changes to increase the amount of time that we have to do our business, it only makes sense to decrease the amount of time it takes for our business to get on the agenda. I obviously understand the challenges of agenda setting, and yet, the urgency that everyone seems to want, I think, can only really happen if we are pushing ourselves through our systems to ensure that we're moving our items more quickly. I get that there's a level of discretion that any council president needs, and yet, you know, again, the combination of adding more time and the fact that we need to be moving more quickly, I think it's important that we make this change right now. And we're setting up our future, right? Because all of these things that we're describing, that we've experienced in the first few months, are, I think, in a lot of ways, an anomaly. They are a product of a growing, new, growing our new government. And so, I'm looking at this amendment by Counselor Koyama-Lane as setting up our future and what a future process will look like. I do not expect that the budget, for example, process will look the way that it did last year. In fact, it better not. And so, I think that we need to take into consideration that we're making a lot of adjustments right now to ensure that we are working with both urgency, but also working in collaboration through our committees to vet these policies. So, I don't see why we can't shorten that timeline from committee to council. I think all of the extra layers of working with the bureaus and all those other variables that were being discussed, I think those variables get worked out in committee. We specifically have a structure in committee that things can stay in committee as long as they need to, to get the work done. By the time it's done by committee, it needs to get on the council agenda. Waiting 90 days is way too long. I think with the addition of more time of council, we should approve this amendment to ensure that things coming out of committee are moving through our body more quickly. So, I will be supporting it.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Smith, I apologize.
That's okay. So, we're changing our structure and we're having twice the amount of meetings, right? So, this particular amendment is solving for a problem we don't have yet. Let's, let this work through the next three months to see what these new, excuse me, what these new meetings will give us. I guarantee you that we'll see things come up on the, on the, on the big council quicker. So, I don't like to solve for problems that we don't have right now. We've changed our structure. So, let's give this structure an opportunity to work. If after three months, it's still a long time before we get to the big council, then this, this is an appropriate amendment. And I want to say for the record, I'm a chair of the Labor and Workforce Committee. It has never taken three months for anyone to get on, on my calendar, never. So, let's, let's just give it a chance, you guys. Let's stop solving for problems and nuance.
Thank you, Counselor. Acting Administrator, is that what we're using? Morrissey, did you have anything else to add? It sounded like there might have been some other details.
Yeah. Hi, thank you. So, I also wanted to share that for, specifically, I would like to flag, just from a staff capacity standpoint, it is already pretty challenging to make sure that we have the ability to really have the, we need the time to have the accuracy so we can give you correct information and ensure that we can implement with accuracy and be effective in the ordinances or the rules that you are all making. I will also share that Title 33, so that is a really hard one to have a 45-day time turnaround, especially that's around planning and zoning. If there are anything that have to require updated findings, we do need more than 45 days to do that work. And so, I would just urge for the, for staff who are really working hard to ensure you have as much complete information and that things are done on time and with accuracy, that we take that into account. So, I would, I would just vote, voice that to help support the staff's work.
So, just to clarify on those code changes, the reason that staff need additional time is about creating the record in case those are appealed? Is that?
Correct. So, creating updated findings is, especially with Title 33, staff definitely need more than 45 days.
Thank you. Counselor, I'm looking at my list, I'm sorry. Counselor Green, I don't believe you've spoken to this yet. Go right ahead.
Thank you, Madam President. Acting DCA, or CA, DCA Morrissey, you raised an interesting question for me. In your view, does staff need more than 45 days between the time that an action is passed out of committee to then be considered at full council? Or do they need more than 45 days just in general to develop this policy?
Thanks for the question. I think it depends on what the action between committee and council is. If you do have to do, like I said, updated findings related to land use and zoning, they do need more than 45 days. I think, again, it would just depend on what the direction was from committee to council.
Okay, that's very helpful.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor, Counselor Canall, did you just leave the queue?
Yeah.
Okay. Counselor Ryan.
Thank you, Council President. I want us to keep this in mind. You know this better than anyone, Council President. There are demands that come from the administration, from the executive, that are time-sensitive to keep operations of the city moving forward. So, I know that you have to factor that into the calendar, and so, I just wanted to make sure that we lift that because those are urgent. And DCA Morrissey, would that be a fair statement?
Yes.
Thank you. And so, I just don't, that's another reason why we need that flexibility on new items coming in to the, to the, to the city's operations. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Canall.
Thank you, Madam President. I think that it's, this is a point that's been raised a couple times. And when we talk about staff, what we're really talking about here is bureau directors and above, DCAs, city administrator, all of that. Most of the time, the people doing the filing are not below that level. And there may be a deputy director, I suppose, as well, or that has to have approval. So, we're talking about who's dealing with the filing timelines and waiting here. Obviously, there's a lot of other staff that work on it too, but I want to, I want to just be clear that we're not talking about rank-and-file staff doing the filing without it already going through a large process to get to that point. I think what's interesting here is the assumption that what council puts forward is not urgent. That's what I'm, I'm struggling with, is this implication that only what the administration puts forward is urgent. I do not question its urgency or its importance. What I question is the implication that what council puts forward, generally informed by the people that we talk to in those town halls and evening meetings and in our emails, are not urgent too. And I'm concerned that, you know, we're going to be in a situation, we're talking about, let's wait three or four months. We're going to be in a situation in the next three or four months where we're going to have, hopefully, some sort of legislation about ICE. I do not want to be voting on that in 2026. I would like to be voting on that in 2025. And there's going to be a need for us to address those things and everything that Counselor Clark mentioned too, which I agree with completely, on economic development and homelessness and all those issues too. And those might be filed by us. They might also be filed by the administration, and both are urgent. And this implication that what we file is not urgent, that really is troubling me with this whole conversation. It's less relevant to the number of days, and I would, I really appreciate Council President's comments because your experience, Madam President, is relevant to this in a very direct way. And I'd love to know, because you mentioned that you wouldn't want to limit it too far, if you have another set of days, another number of days that might make you personally more comfortable with it. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor. I actually am in the queue specifically to reply to that, yes. I just, I want to clarify because what my colleague just said was that the deadlines that our, our acting city administrator was talking about would only affect directors and above. And my understanding from what I heard, and I want to make sure this is accurate, is that what you are describing, Acting Administrator Morrissey, is that on land use and code items, where staff need to have a record before we pass something, that our attorneys can then use if those code changes or land use items are appealed through the land use system that can stand, that can hold. If there are committee changes that are significant, that would require staff, frontline staff, who are the people who write those documents, to make changes to those documents, we would need enough time for those frontline staff and the attorneys to work together to change the documents before council debated, to make sure that the record could hold if those were appealed in a land use process. So, we're actually talking about the needs of frontline staff and our non-management attorney team to do work so that the findings accurately reflect what council has asked for in an appeal, so that we can actually win in court. Is that, we're talking about frontline staff, is that accurate?
That is accurate.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying.
Clarify, my comment was not in response to the DCA's comments. My comment was in response to earlier colleagues who were talking about who is the burden being placed on staff who are filing the item. I agree completely with everything you just said.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor. Counselor, Counselor Ryan, you've spoken twice, so I want to make sure we hear from others. Counselor Zimmerman.
Thank you. I, you know, in listening to this conversation, I'm not getting the sense from, from other counselors that, that anybody is conveying less urgent, more urgent. And so, I'm not, I'm not hearing that. But if we have a 90-day backstop, which we currently have, we have a presiding officer who can always put something on the agenda day one, that window, to me, is, is serving an important role right now, and I'm not, I'm not bothered by, by going to the end of that window. But I would also say, in terms of urgency and flexibility, as was noted earlier with the 9/12 option, if something is so urgent, but the presiding officer is so against it, or against even letting it get scheduled, I guess I have to debate whether or not there is enough consensus around an item being urgent that one cannot get nine people to say, "We must hear it now." And I think that that is a healthy debate, and a lot of this council is split. And a lot of this council, we're going to have these debates that, that are, are important debates even when we disagree with each other. But for the things where we are united in that their urgency is there, and if we have a council president who is the one stick in the mud who doesn't want to move it, I think we still have the tools to do it. So, to Counselor Smith's point, I'm not sure of the problem we're solving here. And for those things that don't have nine people saying they're urgent, then healthy, timely debate is important, and 90 days, to me, seems very reasonable for that. And so, yeah, again, I think, you know, this, this amendment to the overarching baseline document would be pretty concerning. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Mario.
I just want to address a few things that I heard earlier. So, for one thing, 90 days is not acceptable when people are suffering and we have to get legislation passed as quickly as we can. For another thing, there were some comments about this is politics, not rulemaking, and so therefore, you have to build consensus. I would say that we are a pretty, pretty split council on many issues. And actually, Counselor Zimmerman, you and I are probably on the opposite ends of the spectrum, so the irony of that coming from you is not lost on me. But the value implication that we need to have a majority vote to pass things for the people when we are representing very different types of people is not a value that I necessarily think is needed. There are going to be times where I'm going to pass things with seven votes, and that is fine with me because actually passing legislation that is going to help people who I am choosing to represent, who happen to be the people at the very bottom of the ladder, that is my priority. I don't care how it gets done, and I don't care if it looks pretty. So, the 9/12 vote only has utility to a certain degree to rush something through. Sometimes you just need something to be on the agenda, and you know that you're going to get seven votes, and you're going to call it a day. And we are absolutely required to move with urgency on some of these issues. I have heard every single person here, at one point or another, absolutely berate the council president or be extremely angry that they could not get their item on the agenda because we did not have enough time. And the idea that the administrative side of council gets to completely bog down our agenda so that we can't, as the legislative body, pass legislation, is a huge problem. Everything that Counselor Canall laid out means that we are essentially forfeiting our power as a legislative and budget body to the administrative side. And we are the people here who are representing every single district, every single type of person in Portland. We have a wide variety of perspectives on this council for that very reason. So, the 45-day limit is not unheard of. This is, I think, very reasonable, given that we're going to have more meetings. I understand the concerns about certain land use issues or different code changes that staff need delays. Maybe that can be an amendment or something to the code. But overall, this is, we are required to act with urgency. So, I hope that we can get on board with this.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Nowick.
So, I have to say, I don't feel prepared to vote on this today. I was just looking at the existing language, and I'm probably dense, but it's not clear to me that it assumes that something, that you have, something has to have a chance to come through committee before the 45 days starts. So, I'd want that to be clear. I also think that it should be, if we adopt this, it should be at the option of the filer. Because if the filer, after consulting with the administration, realizes, yes, it's going to take 60 days to write up findings on a land use issue, then the filer should be able to say, okay, then I'm waiving the 45 days. And maybe that's enough. I mean, it seems to me that it's sort of a question of who do you trust? Do we trust the filers not to rush things when they shouldn't, when there's issues like, you know, a complicated land use issue? Or do we trust the council president to bring things forward in a timely manner? And I, I think you can argue it either way, so I just want to say that as of right now, I'm kind of confused.
Counselor, was there a motion there for us to do anything different or just expressing your thoughts on where we are right now?
Just where we are right now. I don't feel prepared to vote today.
Okay.
I'd like to think about it more.
Thank you, Counselor. Colleagues, seeing no one else in the queue, Counselor Koyama-Lane.
Yeah, I, this is likely not going to pass, I understand that. DCA Morrissey, I appreciate you sharing the needs of DCAs and bureaus. I know we've had many conversations as leadership about ways that we can work on the flow, make sure it's clear who are primaries. I think it is known that we need to figure out how we're working in tandem a little bit better and how to collaborate. I hope that this can come up for another conversation. It's clear that it's very controversial. I see staff members running around and talking to DCAs, and some of you might want to be careful because I sit right next to Council President, and I can see exactly what you're sending to her.
Counselor Canall, are you in the queue for debate? Okay. Seeing no one else in the queue for debate, Rebecca, could you please call the roll? Seeing no one else in the queue for debate, Rebecca, could you please call the roll?
Koyamalane?
Aye.
Murillo?
Aye.
Novick?
A worried no. I mean, I might be a yes tomorrow, I just don't feel prepared to say yes today.
Don't let them shiver your timbers.
Clark?
No.
Green?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
No.
Avalos?
Aye.
Dunphy?
Aye.
Smith?
No.
Canal?
Aye.
Ryan?
No.
Pertleguine?
No.
The amendment fails with six a and six n's.
Okay. Colleagues, there were no other amendments that were put on the floor prior to debate. So we are now at debate of the underlying, now amended twice ordinance. And the queue is open for comments, debate, questions, or further amendments on the underlying ordinance. I'm going to mention one thing first, just because I want to make sure we're all aware. In A3, there's language that says, "When a meeting falls on a legal holiday, the meeting will be held on the next succeeding business day at the same hour." I just want to note that, depending on how we set up our calendar, there could be some complications there. I don't think that it's enough to vote against this, but I wanted to note that that is something that we may have to come back to at a future time. Okay. Seeing no one else in the queue, Rebecca, could you please, oh, Counselor Avalos?
Sorry, for the last minute. I guess I just want to make a broader point. I think what has emerged in this discussion is something we've been talking about since the beginning, which is, what is the purpose of the council? How does the, how do the people interact with us? What is the way that our policies move through? And ultimately, how are we demonstrating that we are being responsive with urgency to the communities that put us here? I am just overall concerned that we do not share a similar value, it seems, in increasing the people's voice in our chambers. And I just want to put on the record my disappointment. I think that we continue to look at systems as being neutral, when they're not. In fact, we redid this entire form of government, because the way of being was very exclusive to the very communities that we now have represented on this council. So I would encourage us to look holistically at our systems, and remember that we instituted this new form of government to increase the people's representation, and making decisions to not add more nighttime, to not increase the urgency in our timelines, is antithetical to that overall outcome. So I hope we continue to reflect on how we meet that goal. I will continue to push us to do so. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor. And I moved to call roll, momentarily thinking that we were on an emergency item, but we're not, so we will hear this at our next meeting. Counselor Canal, did you have anything to add? Okay. Seeing no one else in the queue, we are going to move this to second reading at our September meeting, and close this agenda item. We do have another agenda item open today, colleagues, establishing the new committee-council This is an item that we debated in a work session, and following that work session, a number of counselors asked that our colleagues who had brought forward proposals on our committee structure, sit down together and try to capture what those proposals were. Counselor Dunphy has put forward an amendment that captures that, which is kind of the most boiled-down version of what folks thought they heard from our colleagues. There are also amendments to that, as Counselor Dunphy mentioned, to build backup. I have put in an amendment with an additional idea for fewer committees, following conversations with the few people, as well as with some of our staff, around how we might set up a structure. The idea of having four committees seemed like an option that we should also consider, so I tried to capture how we might get there, based, again, on the conversation that we had heard. And Counselor Novick has an amendment, which is now posted, described earlier, around how chairs or co-chairs might meet with our presiding officers. Counselor Dunphy, how do you want to go about taking on the amendments that you have put forward?
Well, I'd like to approach them individually. I have four separate issues that I think require each, an up-and-down vote from this body. I can briefly outline all four of them, if that's helpful, and we can discuss them in order, or we can go through one by one at a time. I think that there is, I am noting, a potential conflict between Dunphy Amendment A and Novick's Amendment, just in terms of language. And so we may need some clarification as we get further into this process. But however you would like me to approach this, I'm happy to.
Why don't we do them one at a time? And colleagues, I just want to note also that there are some calendars posted as supplemental information. I mentioned in an email to everybody, but we'll just put on the record as well. None of those are meant to be an official calendar that we are adopting, but just a way to give everyone an idea of how our workflow might look, as informed by staff in council operations and the clerk's office, on what workflows would fit best for our supporting teams, depending on some of the choices that we might make today. Counselor Dunphy, why don't you go ahead and introduce your first amendment?
Sure. Well, I'm also wondering whether or not we should take your amendment first, because to some extent, my, some of my amendments do speak to there being five committees. And so I'm happy to, well, I guess whatever the body thinks, but I'm happy to start us off, or unless you wanted to take yours first?
Let's, I'm looking at what you have. I think, other than C, we can probably move forward with your amendments.
Okay, great. So-
At least do A and B.
Let's do A and B. So Dunphy Amendment A, this is us calling the question on whether or not to have a co-chair model, or a vice chair model, or chair-vice chair model, or maximum flexibility. For the purposes of my amendment, I am proposing that the city council have a chair-vice chair model for the committees, with the responsibilities outlined for each of the chair and the vice chair, and the responsibilities for both. I'm happy to read it out loud, but folks also can read. All right.
Counselor, can we pause for one minute? Did we, I think that previously, I hadn't taken seconds on these, since there were multiple in this document, so I want to make sure, as we go through these, that we do get a second on each of them.
Sure, absolutely. Just briefly reading Dunphy Amendment A, it reads that, D2, "Each committee shall be administered by a chair and vice chair." Subsection A, "The chair's responsibilities shall include," I, "leading each committee meeting," double I, "two," I guess, "representing each committee on the leadership team, and communicating upcoming topics from the administration to the vice chair and other members of the committee." Section B, "The vice chair's responsibilities shall include charing committee meetings when the chair is absent, charing temporary or joint committee subgroups as needed to tackle subject, specific subject areas." Section C, "Both chair and vice chair shall be responsible for tracking policy implementation within the administration, to ensure policy goals are reached, and collaborating on committee agenda topics, and coordinating with counselors and staff to bring salient issues to the committee." And I would entertain a second.
Second.
Okay. Moved by Counselor Dunphy, seconded by Counselor Koyamalane. Counselor Canal, are you in the queue to debate Dunphy Amendment A?
No, Madam President, I'm in the queue to ask a question, just a clarifying question.
Right ahead.
What is the leadership team? I didn't see that anywhere else in this entire document, except in a whereas.
That's a good point.
It seems like a foundational piece of information for this one, so I just wanted to understand it better.
That is a good point.
Counselor Dunphy, do you prefer to leave this as is? Do you prefer-
Oh, sorry. I think that's sort of implied, I guess it would probably need to be in Section E. I think that is Section E, it's functionally, it's not referred to explicitly as a leadership team in Section E, but "The committee chair shall convene with the council president to coordinate agendas, priorities, overall strategy, and unconvening ad hoc work groups as needed," which is in the underlying. It is not explicitly called a leadership team, and I'm happy to omit the language, or add it.
Counselor Dunphy, do you prefer to add the term "leadership team" to E, or do you prefer to take that out of Dunphy A?
I think I would prefer to take it out of Dunphy A.
Okay, so-
It would read, "Representing each committee, and communicating upcoming topics from the administration to the," oh gosh, that doesn't read right. Okay.
You could say, "Representing each committee in," Counselor-
Sure, I will just omit two, two, sub-A, sub-two.
Okay.
Yeah, sure, yeah. Actually, that's a better option. I would omit the words "representing each committee on the leadership team and." So "The chair's responsibilities include communicating upcoming topics from the administration to the vice chair and other members of the committee."
Okay.
Omitting the first half of the sentence.
Got it. When Counselor Koyamalane comes back, we'll make sure that that's a friendly. But in the meantime, let's move forward there, as is. Colleagues, is there any debate on the amendment? Counselor Ryan?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Madam President, Counselor Dunphy, I want to hear from you why you like the chair-vice chair model, as opposed to the co-chair model. I've experienced both, and I experienced them a bit differently, but I find a lot of value in the one that I am a co-chair in. And I think what we're getting at here is, there's a direct correlation between, this is my assumption in reading this, that you like the chair-vice chair model, because it supports this leadership team that we're learning about.
On the one hand, yes. I think that the ability for us to have a greater ability to coordinate with the president and vice president, and the work that is happening in the committees in a structured way, makes a lot of sense to me. I think that the co-chair model is confusing to the public in a lot of ways. I think that, in a lot of circumstances, I'm seeing it work very well for some of our colleagues, but I don't know that that is necessarily a sustainable model, depending on future councils. And I, I think it's just broadly, generally, a confusing model. I think that it, to some degree, I just think, I think that a hierarchy makes sense with regard to communication and leadership within a committee. I also worry that, to some extent, it is not, the co-chair model isn't inherently for the health of the body, but rather for the health of egos of elected officials. I think that if everybody is a leader, then nobody is a leader, and it doesn't matter at that point. And I think we aren't able to move forward with any sort of strategic vision for the broader body.
Okay, thank you. I think what I need to hear from maybe perhaps Council President, is the value proposition of this leadership team.
I'm in the queue, and why don't I address that then, just so that I don't cut in front of others? Are you comfortable with that, Counselor?
I think I'll just end with a statement that we're clearly, you know, divided, and see if the media's picked up on this of late, of course. I think it's really important to have balance, no matter where we're going with this. And if there's a room where it's happening, which is this executive team, or this leadership team, then I'll be, the new fight would be about ensuring we have some balance there.
Thank you, Counselor.
Just had to put that into the record.
Counselor Novick?
We talked about this a bit in a previous meeting, but I like the co-chair model. I think it works well where it's being used, and so I don't want to remove that as a possibility. I also think that, you know, it might be about egos, but I think that it's going to be a lot more difficult for people to vote for a new committee structure, if only five people are going to have gavels. And there's a reason, I mean, avoiding a bloodbath is a reasonable thing to think about. I also, as I said earlier today, I don't think that, I don't see the value of a leadership team, for one thing. I think that this is a council that doesn't consist of people who generally follow leaders. I think they're more aligned with Bob Dylan's line, "Don't follow leaders, watch the parking meters." And I think that having a mysterious leadership team making decisions that they, by definition, couldn't share with other people, because that would violate public meetings law, it would be a problem. So again, my amendment proposes that we just sort of, I don't even know if this is necessarily, write this down, that we can have, play the, have the function of information exchange being done by individual committee chairs and co-chairs, talking to each other, and the council president and vice president being part of that.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Smith?
Thank you, Madam President. And Counselor Dunphy, I'm trying to figure, I was looking at your Dunphy A. Now, does that include that there must be only, you said at least one chair from each committee? Is that a part of your, of your proposal?
Yeah, there would be a chair and a vice chair for each committee.
Okay, and from each district?
That is Dunphy B. We will-
That's Dunphy B.
Go to that in a second.
Okay, so that's what I was wanting to talk about. I just want to say for the record, I think that, in terms of condensing confusion, or less confusion, that changing this whole committee system, whether it be to your Dunphy A or B, I think we should actually wait to do these kinds of things until the top of the year, because we agreed not to change presidents every six months. And I think making all these different changes is confusing to the public. I like the idea of where we're at right now, and then we change it at the top of the year, if there's going to be a change in president, or otherwise. I think we just confuse the people too much. And if we're talking about our bureaus, now our bureaus have to go through another level of understanding, new chairs, the whole nine yards. So I, I'd like to stay where we're at. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. I think I'm next in the queue, so I'll address Counselor Ryan's question, and wanted to mention one other thing as well. Counselor Ryan, in terms of the leadership team, I have foreseen using that space not for substantive conversations about what we want to do on items, in a way that Counselor Novick has suggested, which might absolutely violate serial meetings laws, if people talk to each other. But as a space, for example, to say, if we have an evening committee meeting, allow chairs to come together and talk about what items they have coming up on their agenda, where they might need to use an evening meeting space to take more public testimony, and who has things coming up more quickly, and how do we figure out who could use that time this month, next month, the month after? Those more administrative items, things like, how are folks managing testimony in their committee, and are there new practices that we want to put in place, where it's helpful to have everybody in the room? And having it really be a more administrative space than substantive space. So I think that it would be very helpful to have, for those reasons. I think that, as council president, I have run into a number of situations where I would have liked to be able to very quickly sit down with all of the committee chairs and say, "Hey, here's a, an idea, hey, here's a thing that I think we should be doing differently, in terms of how council and committee work together." When we have backlogs of items, to be able to sit down with everybody and hash out some of those things would be helpful. Right now, I try to do that in one-offs, when they come up with specific committees, but I think it would be fantastic for me, as a leader, to have that space. If we decide not to have that space, that's okay, we haven't had it, I can move forward without it. But those are the types of reasons that I would like to have that space. Sure.
Okay, I appreciate what you just said. My question is also about the composite, because you seem to be in favor of chair-vice chair, not co-chairs. And if shared leadership of the co-chairs can figure it out, on who to bring to that meeting, say it's monthly, why would there be opposition to that? And my point is also that I really think it's important that we have balance- that we have balance in that group. And I would worry if all the chairs were from one side of this aisle that seems to be emerging.
Thank you, Counselor. And I'll move into the other things I wanted to say generally and why I joined the queue. And I think that that might address some of what you just raised. Colleagues, I'm not supportive of this amendment because when I first brought forward to you all a committee structure with some co-chairs and some chairs and vice chairs, I said that I was doing so very intentionally to create the precedent that we could have either one. As we think about changing committees, I think it's very possible that we could have a situation where we have only chairs and vice chairs. But I don't want to write that somewhere because I think that that undoes the precedent setting of saying, "we are okay with having either of these things." And I want to make sure that whatever this council needs in the future and whatever a president of this council needs in the future, they can bring forward as a proposal to the body as a whole to vote on. And I don't want to arbitrarily say we shouldn't do one or we should always do the other. In terms of balance, I want to address that point, which is not something that's here. This is just about, do we want to change what our committees are? And if this passes, then our code would require me to bring forward a proposal to this body on committee membership, which I would intend to do at our first meeting after the recess. But this change would create winners and losers. It certainly would. Decreasing the number of chairs means that... Or the number of committees means that we would decrease the number of folks around the dais holding gavels. And I think that's a point that we all need to go into this knowing. We need to be open-eyed about that. To Counselor Dunphy's point, when everybody leads, nobody leads is perhaps the right approach. To Counselor Ryan's point, when you give everybody an opportunity to lead, you have more voices. I think that those are both very valid points. I do, because I have heard away from this dais from a number of people, concerns about how I might approach leadership moving forward, just want to state for the record, for all of you and for others listening, that I have tried to approach this work from the start. And I shared with some of my colleagues before any of us were seated, before my name was out there for council president, that it's how I would approach my work in any position here, trying to make sure that many voices get heard. Because I generally think that when you listen and respond to your opposition, you come up with better policy. So I hope that as we go through this, I don't have folks impugning my values and the way that I would approach things by suggesting that I would intentionally politically create a system where we have all chairs from one perspective or another. I don't believe that there are only two perspectives on this council. But I certainly would not pull all from one or the other for a leadership team that I was creating at a time when I'm leading this body. Counselor Canell?
Thank you, Madam President. First, I agree completely with everything that Counselor Ryan said in his previous comments, so maybe we're not as divided as we might say. I have a question, just to clarify. Madam President, your description of what you would use a theoretical leadership team for... My understanding, and I'm going to use a very specific quote here, is that that would not include, quote, "any determination, action, vote, or final disposition upon a motion, proposal, order, resolution, ordinance, or measure on which a vote of a governing body is required." And that is because you're talking about administrative uses. And that's my understanding. I don't want to hold you legally to it, but my understanding of your thematic approach to it, I think that squares as those are two separate ideas, right? We wouldn't be using that to deliberate upon things that... Whether or not to pass or fail an item.
My intent would not be to bring forward items like that. I don't want to speak to what somebody might do in the future.
Fair enough. I appreciate that distinction. I quote that. That's from the Public Meetings Law, State Public Meetings Law. And it is... It's my way of saying I'm not sure that a leadership team needs to only have six people on it because I'm not sure the Public Meetings Law applies to the idea of sharing information in the first place. That's immaterial to my reason for opposing this amendment, but I do think it's relevant information, too. And that's O.R.S. 192.610, Section 1, Part 2, as retitled in the most recent update to it. So I think that that's one framing piece of information. Bless you. And so what I would say is, the five co-chairs who are current... The five counselors who are currently co-chairs all spoke in favor of the co-chair model last time when we did the work session. And I'll just point out that working with Counselor Novick has been a very good experience for me. And part of the reason why is it forces us to actually subsume our egos in some ways, to talk with each other because we have different approaches. We have different networks and knowledge bases. And so that act of creating, of co-creation of an agenda is actually, I think, healthy for elected officials who... I don't know if anyone out there might guess this, but it occasionally happens that an elected official has an ego. So I think we're in a good place with that particular thing. And I agree with the approach that Counselor Smith brought up around letting this kind of play out a little bit until... At least this specific issue, until New Year's. And also Counselor Zimmerman's previous point about not over-limiting the role of the council president because that's what this would do before that second resolution that would have to come up. So those are my reasons why I'll be voting no on it. The other point I'll make is that even if the goal was to achieve a six-person or fewer group, the only distinction that seems... The only two distinctions that seem to be happening here between a chair and a vice chair, one is whether or not they're a part of this leadership team or not, and the other is whether or not they're swapping the gavels or one is always the primary and the other is always the secondary if the first person's not present. And that latter one does not appear to be a high priority to anybody. Correct me if I'm wrong. So even... I even think the goal of that could be achieved by just designating one of two co-chairs in that scenario as the person who goes to a hypothetical leadership team, should one be created in the future. And I'm very open to Counselor Novick's other comments on whether or not to structure it that way as well. And I'm looking forward to that amendment. But I'll be voting no on this one. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Morio?
Thank you, Council President. I was going to say that I also agree with Counselor Ryan, so maybe we can start a tally sheet of when we agree and maybe make a bingo game out of it. I think that co-chairs are really important. I don't think it's about ego, though I agree a lot of elected officials run for office because we think we're so special. But the co-chair model, I have found, actually creates a much more balanced committee because you can have a wide variety of perspectives in a way that you wouldn't be able to have otherwise. And what... For example, I've had a really great time talking with Counselor Novick as co-chair of the Climate Committee. I think we have different relationships within community, within government, with different experts, and who we choose to bring to the table. And I think that that has strengthened our committee and made it really... Just brought a wide array of voices to the table that we wouldn't have had otherwise. So I have found that the co-chair model brings a lot of balance and nuance to the work that we do. And I think it's really important. I also just firmly disagree with the idea... Like, at the end of the day, when you have a gavel, you have power over what gets heard. You have power over who gets a seat at the table, who... What gets put on the public record? It is a huge power to have. So I think that good leadership is actually being able to learn how to share power. And especially under a new government structure where we have different districts that we're representing and such a wide array of voices at the table, we have an opportunity to share power in a way that we never have before. And I think that we should seriously consider that. So for those reasons, I'll be a no on this amendment.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Koyamalane?
Thank you, Madam President. With many of these things coming up, I am trying to balance what might be best for this body and our needs in terms of how we're working together and our culture and our flow. And then what I would imagine would be best down the road, put in place for many years. That's attention for me. Just to be transparent, this idea of how to bring in more counselors, whether it's leadership team or just in general into some meetings, I don't think that's controversial between us. I think it's something we're talking a lot about and maybe have some different ideas of how that could look. On Monday mornings, we meet with the mayor and all of the DCAs and do some sending of committee... Sending of their items to different committees. Maybe that's a place where other folks can step in, maybe not. Maybe part of this is having primaries for DCAs, which is something that I heard from Mr. Jordan. That could be helpful. I'm not sure about what that looks like. I'm not sure if that actually should be in code or outlined in code. I think that's something that we want some flexibility with. And I feel similarly with chairs and co-chairs. If I'm being honest, what I think is best for down the road for clarity is chair and vice chair. And I'm leaning more for the health of this body, for there to be some more flexibility, especially as we are trying to build some trust and figure this out. So right now, I am a no.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Green?
Thank you. I went into this just not really knowing where I was going to land on this because it's such a hard one for me because I see... I can see it both ways. I really can. It's quite efficient to have a pretty expected hierarchy. I'm sorry for my leisure wear. I wanted to wear a Western shirt today. I realize that now. I'm on the camera. But I've been convinced by this argument. I mean, like, the co-chair thing and Council President you... Sorry for the levity. Council President, you raised some really important things for us to think about, which is that the job that you have is to balance things and to think about what is for the best health of our governing body. And based upon who gets elected to these positions, you're not necessarily going to be able to solve that equation in a rigid model. So some years, it may be maybe all chairs and vice chairs. Some years, it may be all co-chairs. But I think there needs to be a degree of freedom to kind of wiggle in that space. So I think at this point, I am leaning... I am prepared to vote no on this, to keep that flexibility. But I also wanted to say another thing was I... I don't think that we should impugn the council president's motives on who gets assigned to these seats. I think she has tried to balance things. I may disagree with the theory of change and that balance for the sake of balance is what's for the best of all of us. But I see the balance nevertheless. And I think that if I was ever in a situation where I didn't think that my politics were represented by a gavel, I know I can find three counselors to bring something straight to city council. So I don't... So I felt that there, and I just wanted to acknowledge that as well.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Novick?
I just wanted to say that I think that the theme of "we don't have to write everything down" is one that we've applied to a lot of the issues here. Like in terms of what Vice President Koyamalane was saying about being useful to have... Or what you, Madam President, were saying about useful sometimes to have chairs in meetings with the executive. It doesn't necessarily have to be all the chairs all the time. I mean, if they identify what issues they want to talk about, you could ask a couple of the chairs of a couple of the committees to come to that meeting. So I think that instead of like saying, "there will be a leadership team that should do this," I think you could achieve the same goals by being a little more freewheeling.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Avalos?
Coming in, I think that my feelings towards this amendment were of support. And I do generally still think that it would be good to have a more clear delineation of leadership. And part of it is because I'm still grappling with where are we headed as a body as it relates to that leadership team. So I think that's why this vote is complicated for me because I think I was coming in feeling that this would be the best option so that it would clear the way to make more sense logistically for what a leadership team could look like. Because I don't think that this whole, like, co-chair and then we pick one, I don't think that that's equitable or I think that would be a little bit messier. That being said, I think in the beginning, when it was originally proposed as a, like, "we should keep it flexible so that each committee could have its own structure," it's clear that counselors are experiencing that in different ways, and I think that's okay. And I definitely agree with Counselor Morio's points just around like what shared governance looks like. And I can see that argument. I see both of the arguments. And again, I kind of came in leaning towards this. But I guess now I'm leaning away from it just for the sake of what I'm seeing is the spirit that everybody is bringing to, how they're seeing the flexibility. And I guess I'm, you know, still curious how this all lands as it relates to a leadership team. So that's a big reason why I wanted to support it in the first place. But I guess I will not support it now due to where the discussion has headed. But thank you, Counselor Dunphy, because him and I have talked a lot about this. And I definitely agree with the spirit of what you were doing. I think, based on what I'm hearing from my colleagues, I'm inclined to not support it, so.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Clark?
Thank you, Madam President. I support the amendment. I think it's very confusing for the public to have co-chairs. Who do we contact? You know, I know we're in the process of birthing a new government. I don't want twins. I just want one council chair. So thank you, Counselor Dunphy.
Counselor Canell?
Just one quick point here. In the earlier item, I guess it was testimony for both of these, we had a piece of testimony that said that we don't have committee emails. And I think that this would help a great deal with any potential confusion that exists with the public alongside some of the other work we're doing to shorten the URLs so it can just be caps instead of council-dash-and, you know, all of that. I think having a single point of contact might assist with the ability for a community member to... Or frankly, anybody, to reach out to co-chairs by saying, "here's an email, goes to caps committee@, and it forwards automatically to Counselor Novick and I." It's not a real email address, but I'm suggesting something like that to assist with the ability to contact co-chairs together. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor. Colleagues, seen no one else in the queue. Rebecca, could you please call the roll on Dunphy Amendment A?
Koyamalane?
No.
Morio?
No.
Novick?
No.
Clark?
Yes, aye.
Green?
No.
Zimmerman?
Aye.
Avalos?
Hmm, no.
Dunphy?
Aye.
Aye.
No.
Ryan?
No.
Pertleguinny?
No.
The amendment fails with four aye and eight nay votes.
Thank you. Colleagues, we are scheduled until 1:30 today. I think we have time to do one more amendment and end then or very close to then. I'm going to challenge us to do that, and then we will pick back up tomorrow where we leave off today. Counselor Dunphy, would you like to move your next amendment?
Absolutely. Thank you, colleagues. Also, that was great. I'm glad we all got on the, you know, got to have the conversation. Dunphy Amendment B is really very straightforward. I would like it that regardless of how many committees we have, that each district is represented as a committee chair in some capacity. Now that we have a co-chair model as a, as a option, it should be certainly easier, but I think that it will be harder, you know, you know, I have heard repeatedly, I think, you know, partially because of the structure and too many committees before, that we couldn't have every district represented on every committee. This resolution will move in that direction, but I think that it would also be important to designate a counselor from each district as a chair. And so Dunphy B adds subsection four that says each district shall have at least one chair of a policy committee. And I would entertain a second if anybody's interested.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Canall?
Thank you, Madam President. I have a question and then a comment. So, and the question may also be a suggestion, I'm not sure. You mentioned that now that we have co-chairs available to us, that that may change the way that this is interpreted, but this still uses the word chair. Would it be friendly to add in the parenthetical co? So it could be either a chair or a co-chair, depending on how that plays out?
It doesn't offend me, certainly.
So that'd be a, prior to the word, it would be?
Well, a chair, a co-chair is still a chair.
Are we interpreting it that way? Is that?
I want to look to our attorney to make sure, but my interpretation in implementing this would be that this could be a chair or co-chair, the way it's written legally. Does that check?
I think that's a fine interpretation.
Okay. I'm seeing two attorneys saying yes to that. So let's just state it clearly for the record. Two of our attorneys have given us the thumbs up here that this could be interpreted as meaning a chair in any capacity.
Okay.
Chair or co-chair.
Thank you. That addresses one of my underlying concerns. I, as I think everyone may recall, I voted no on the original committees, not because of the part of their creation, their number, or their purpose, but the, specifically the district representation as a membership. And I really appreciate Counselor Dunphy for bringing this whole thing forward, for putting in that each district shall have at least one member, which is outside the scope of this amendment, but relevant here. Because I've been debating whether or not this is required to achieve that goal. I do think that with four committees at minimum, we'd be talking about eight co-chairs at maximum or four chairs at minimum, and in that scenario, it is definitely possible to achieve that without sort of manipulating the system to achieve it. And so as a result, I'm less concerned about it here. I don't know that it necessarily, I'm concerned about it's being implemented in the future in a way that is serving that goal primarily, as opposed to serving the need of the committee as far as serving the need of the council. But I also know that this isn't code, so I'm, I'm less concerned about it now, but I'm looking forward to hearing the debate. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor. Vice President Quayamalane?
Thank you, Madam President. I appreciate the intent behind this, similar to membership of each committee, having someone from each district represented. That makes a lot of sense to me. I do have some concerns around where this could be challenging, taking away some flexibility. I'm wondering if you would be open to or have thought about changing this so it's, says each district shall have at least one council member holding a gavel. So that could mean, it's not necessarily a policy committee, if we end up with a finance committee with a, or role as council president, that each district has at least one person holding a gavel.
Can I respond real quick?
Go right ahead. Yes, go right ahead.
I would prefer to leave it in the way it's written. Coming from the East Side, I want some guarantee in some capacity with language that we are using consistently throughout the rest of the document, that we will have some geographic representation in leadership. And I do appreciate that there could be situations in which it, you know, an ad hoc committee or a subgroup, work group may be sufficient, but I, I want to make sure that we have broad representation wherever possible. So that, that is my preference, is to keep it as it is.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Zimmerman?
I'm sorry, did you have any follow-up, Counselor?
No, I was just going to say thank you.
Counselor Zimmerman?
Thanks. So this prepositions us to have to have at least four committees. I think that's important to note. We haven't made that decision. It also, I think there's a big difference between getting elected to represent your district, which we've all done, and we're all equal in that sense, but the skill set then to run a committee is different. And I don't think that that is inherently given to you simply because you were elected. And in this, in this theory, that could occur in a single district where we could even have three people who do not want to chair something, and this would say, now they must. We are all equal in representing our districts and having been elected to represent our, our folks, but I don't think we are all equal in our right to have a gavel or to be a chair. I think that is a different decision by the presiding officer to make those choices. And so this, this amendment would complicate that in ways that I don't, you know, I'm just, just sitting here quickly looking, it's like, two chairs, they currently exist from District One. Two co-chairs and a president exist in District Two. Two co-chairs and a vice president exist in District Three. A co-chair and two chairs exist in District Four. So from a geographic representation perspective, I'm feeling like we've hit the mark. And so for, for that, I'm not looking to add more complicating or more restrictiveness to this. I also think that we can be respectful that we're all elected from different parts of this city, and there's a difference to this next level of leadership, which is why we take votes for things like council president and vice president. So for, for that reason, I don't think I'll be supporting this, while I do believe it comes from a very genuine, transparent place. I'm just, I'm not there on this.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Smith?
Thank you, Madam President. I, I agree with Counselor Zimmerman. I, this is confusing, and because we haven't taken a vote on the number, I'm not clear how many committee members are going to be on each committee, whether it be four or five. So that's also concerning to me, that it was not identified. So I agree with what you're saying, Counselor.
Thank you, Counselor. Before I say anything to this, I just want to acknowledge the awkwardness of me weighing in on something like this while sitting in the president's seat. I try to think about these things for the future, not for me in this seat now, but I acknowledge that it sometimes comes off as a bit awkward. I am a little bit concerned about this requirement. I have heard loud and clear from folks the concerns about not having people on some committees, and in response to that, I've tried to share the various criteria that we were looking at in making those committees. And we heard just a few minutes ago, the need to balance values when thinking about folks who are chairing committees. We have heard in this debate, the need to think about interest, both in sharing a committee at all, but also interest in terms of what issues people want to work on. We are now hearing a need to include in the balance of how we pick chairs and the proposal I put forward in that we vote on geographic representation. I've heard from many of my colleagues comments about how just because somebody is in the same district doesn't mean that some of you feel like you represent the same people. I think it's my job to represent everybody in District Two, but I know that that isn't shared by everyone. And so I'm struggling to think about how I take all of these different needs, overlay skill sets, because I think about not just does somebody have the skill set or not, but in the future, when we've had a number of years of elections and we have councilors who have served for longer or less long, and who have more experience in our system versus not, just that understanding of what as a committee chair one needs to do. And when I think about holding all of those things, something has to give. So I am probably a no on this, but I would ask colleagues that if you are a yes on this, you have some thoughts for me, not necessarily here today, because we're running up on time, but in the future, of what you think should give instead? Because I can't put all of those things as the top priority in figuring out who should chair what committees. It is just literally not possible. Counselor Green, you've not spoken.
Yeah, I was just going to raise a question for the carrier. Counselor Dunphy, given this sort of sequencing of how we're considering resolutions and amendments, would you consider withdrawing this at this stage and being ready to reintroduce it after we've adopted a resolution that specifies the number of committees we have?
I think that's fair. I'm also, I will also note that if we had, for example, three committees, which I can't imagine we could get below three committees, but if we had three, each having co-chairs, that's six. We could pretty easily meet at that point. But I do hear that perhaps there is an underlying question that we should answer first, and so, and in the interest of time, I'm happy to withdraw for now with the, wait, is it a withdrawal or a table? What do I do?
I believe you would table the amendment, which normally would mean we would go to your next amendment, except that I'll note it's 125, so if you do so, I will probably have us end the meeting for today and pick back up at your next amendment tomorrow.
I don't want to, knowing we have five minutes left, and there are some folks in the queue who may still be interested in speaking on this, I don't want to preemptively table it, but I am absolutely willing to table the amendment conversation until later.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Quayamalane?
Thank you, Madam President. This is helpful to hear more about your intention behind this. At first, I was thinking about it as making sure that there was really balance throughout the city, and as you were talking about it, it sounded to me more also, or also, or more, not sure, you can explain, that this was about making sure that District One isn't left out and is part of the conversation, and that is compelling to me. I'm wondering if you have considered the idea of putting in something specifically around District One?
You know, I certainly feel special about District One, but I don't think that for the health of the body, it makes a lot of sense. And I think this was the, the closest that I could get to making sure that my constituents east of I-205 are represented, and in some circumstances, east of 82nd. I don't, don't forget about Uhlens and Sumner. But I didn't want to necessarily call out District One as though it is something precious, even though it is.
It is. Thank you for that suggestion, Counselor. Counselor Canall?
Yeah, thanks. Counselor Zimmerman and Counsel President, I think your, your arguments convinced me, so I do think I'll be a no on this. But I do want to point out that I think this is something we should just have be a part of the conversation when we do have that second document come up around what the, what the, the members and leadership might look like, not as the only goal. And I think at that time, it does make sense to give input to you, Madam President, on how we might individually think that those items should be weighed, not items, criteria that you used. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor, and I hear, I hear that I'm now put on notice to make sure that I can explain all of that. That's great. Colleagues, there is no one else in the queue. Counselor, would you like to take a chance on a vote on this, or would you like to make a motion to lay it on the table to come back to later in the debate?
I'd like to make a motion to lay it on the table for a later date.
Given that that motion is coming from the carrier, is that something that we need to vote on to close debate on this amendment? Okay, so we need to vote to close debate on this amendment. You'll then have the opportunity to bring it back up further in the discussion tomorrow.
Second.
We can do it without objection? Fantastic. Colleagues, is there any objection to laying this matter on the table? The carrier will be able to bring it back up at another point in the debate. Okay. Seen none. I am going to carry over debate on this agenda item to tomorrow's recessed council meeting, which begins at 2:30, and we will continue debate on amendments and on the underlying motion. This meeting is post, is recessed.